Call to order, the City of Newport Beach Planning Commission, meeting for Thursday, July 21, 2016. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
All commissioners present, with the exception of Commissioner Zach, who's excused this evening.
Public comments? Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record and print your name on the blue forms provided at the podium. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Request for continuances?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We have received a request for continuance for public item, item number two on your agenda regarding the Trosh residence. We do have a representative of the applicant here, if you do have some additional questions, but the request for continuance is until August 18.
Okay. Sure, Commissioner Kettin?
Staff, when was that requested?
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you. Commissioner Kettin, I think Commissioner Lawler needs to make a quick announcement on this item.
Okay.
Yes, I will recuse myself from this voting, although I don't feel I have a conflict out of overabundance of caution. I'm going to recuse myself because I do have a business relationship with one of the individuals opposed to the applicant's proceeding. So therefore, again, I don't feel there's a conflict, but to be overly cautious, I'll recuse myself.
Just wondered when.
Vice Chair Kettin, the request came in this afternoon.
Didn't we have a discussion about this several months ago, about having delays? I mean, last-minute changes to these? I believe we did.
I'm sorry, if you're in reference in terms of the continuance or in terms of the...
Yes, the continuance of an item, any item, at the last minute.
Well, the applicant certainly does have the ability to request the continuance, but it is the commission's decision whether or not to move forward with the continuance or to hear the public, or to have, conduct the public hearing. So that option is available to the commission this evening if you wish to pursue it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm open to granting the continuance, but I'll open it up for public comment before we make a motion. So, any public comment on the continuance?
Thank you to all of you for hearing me. My name's Gavin Sacks, 332 Catalina Drive. The neighbors, of which I'm one, that have an interest in opposition to the application vehemently oppose the continuation of this matter. This matter first went before the Planning Commission in October of 2015. It was continued in that hearing. It was heard again on December 17. It was denied, five votes to two, by the Planning Commission. Since that time, plans have been revised. The application for the revised project was formally logged over one month ago. The staff report, the plan set, and all supporting documentations, documentation has been out in the public record for everybody to see. There've been lots of emails going around. Barring any major substantive change to the project itself, such as some sort of redrawing of the plans or some sort of major project change, I don't see any valid reason why the matter should be continued. Okay? We have a quorum of members who are able to vote here. This has been going on for ten and a half months. I think it's reasonable to call the ball on this, hear what we have to say. I think you folks are very well-informed. And just another comment on more of a personal level. It's July 21. Okay, we had to hear the last go-around on December 17, right during Christmas time. It's now the middle of summer. People have tried to reschedule business meetings, summer vacations in order to be here. To find out an hour and a half before the meeting that it's being continued after all the work we've done in preparation is a low blow and is certainly not appreciated. The matter should be heard on its own merits right now at this pre-arranged forum. Thank you very much.
Yep, anyone else?
Good evening, Chair Kramer, members of the Commission. I'm Shawna Schaffner of CAA Planning. I represent the applicant, John and Elsatros. They were unable to be here tonight at the last minute. We do request a continuance. If the commission does not feel that that is appropriate, I am prepared to address you. But this is an appeal that went to the City Council. We requested that the City Council remand it to the commission because we feel that we have made significant changes. We would like the opportunity to address the commission rather than having been heard just by the City Council, and we'd like that opportunity on August 18.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Public comments closed. Bring it back to the commission. I'll make a motion to approve the continuance until August 18. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Hillgren voting no and Commissioner Lawler recusing himself.
Thank you. Next item is consent items, item number one, minutes of July 11, 2016. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Were there any amendments to the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Moser. Mr. Moser had a sheet on it.
Okay, maker of the motion, do you include the amendments from Mr. Moser in your motion? Yes?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number three, 150 Newport Center, PA 2014-213. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kramer, members of the Commission. Tonight is the first public hearing on the proposed 150 Newport Center Drive project. The application includes numerous requests, and therefore, we are focusing our presentation this evening on the legislative or policy requests. These include the proposed general plan amendment, zoning changes, and height. On August 4, staff will present the environmental impact report, the proposed site plan, and track map, as well as the draft terms of the development agreement. At that time, the Planning Commission will have all the necessary information for making a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will be making the final determination on this application because it does include a general plan amendment, zoning changes, and the development agreement. If it's all right with the Chair, we would like to take questions at the conclusion of our presentation. And with that, McConanova, who is the project manager, as well as Greg Ramirez, will provide you information on the legislative topics.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is McConanova, Associate Planner to the Planning Division. The project for 150 Newport Center is a request for a 45-dwelling unit condominium building located at 150 Newport Center Drive in the Newport Center area. The application includes several legislative and discretionary applications. Tonight, we were going to focus on the legislative applications, including a general plan amendment to change the commercial designation of OR to a residential land use of RM, multiple-unit residential. This general plan amendment would also increase the dwelling unit limit in statistical area L1 by 45 additional dwelling units. Also requested is a zoning code amendment to establish a planned community development plan. The current zone of the property is OR, which is office, regional, commercial, and the change would be to a residential planned community development plan for 45 dwelling units. In addition, a tentative track map to establish the condominium subdivision is requested, a development agreement, and site development review, and an environmental impact report. The site development review looks at the site-specific project design, whether it's consistent with the standards established through the planned community, and the development agreement includes public benefits in exchange for the development approval. The environmental impact report has been prepared and distributed for public comment and is required in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. So, few changes that have occurred since the recent study session on June 23. The original project that was considered in the EIR is a 49-dwelling unit, seven-story project. The applicant has chosen to reduce their request to a 45-dwelling unit, six-story project, up to 65 feet 6 inches to the top of the roof, 69 feet 6 inches to the top of mechanical equipment. All parking is provided onsite in a three-level basement. As mentioned a couple times now, the outline this evening is going to focus on the legislative amendments, the general plan, and zoning amendments, as well as the planned community development plan and project height. So that's how we will run through this. And the other topics will be discussed at the next meeting. So this is a vicinity map of the project site. 150 Newport Center is currently occupied by a car wash. It is located at the northeast corner of Newport Center Drive and Anaquin Drive. Going back real quickly, we have Fashion Island to the north, Gateway Plaza, an office community with two-story office buildings to the west, an office and medical office building at 180 Newport Center to the south, and a grouping of office, retail, and service uses, including the Edwards Cinema and Muldoon's Restaurant to the east. So as previously discussed, the general plan is a legislative document that sets the goal and vision for the city for, it's basically an outlook for the next 20 years. Amendments can be made to the general plan through the amendment process. It does require a public hearing to the Planning Commission and City Council. So as noted, a general plan amendment is required to increase the dwelling unit intensity for this project, and hence, part of the reason for the public hearing process this evening. In reviewing a general plan amendment, it's important to look at the current goals and policies of the general plan to see whether the requested amendment is appropriate for that ongoing outlook for the city. So the primary goal established in the general plan for Newport Center suggests that the incorporation of residential uses is important to the Newport Center area. It says, "A successful mixed-use district that integrates economic and commercial centers serving the needs of Newport Beach residents and the subregion, with expanded opportunities for residents to live close to jobs, commerce, entertainment, and recreation, and is supported by a pedestrian-friendly environment." The requested land use change to residential use is essentially requesting to incorporate additional residential uses in close proximity to the retail, recreation, and commercial uses that are very prevalent right now in Newport Center. Here's a look at the current general plan land use map. You can see the property here with the star in blue, and the current designation is COR. That is Regional Commercial Office, and the change is to RM, which would establish the property as multiple residential. So currently, let's go back quickly. There's an anomaly, you can see 35 covers the entire block 100 for this Newport Center area. The general plan change would remove the existing commercial entitlement of 8,500 square feet from this anomaly, and then establish the property as residential and add 45 dwelling units in the general plan intensity. Here's a quick look at the existing residential development in statistical area L1, that's the Newport Center area, as identified in the general plan. So there are, shown in pink are the existing projects that have been developed or currently under construction in Newport Center. Shown in green are entitled, or entitled units that have not been constructed. That includes five dwelling units for the Newport Beach Country Club. And then there are two proposed projects which require general plan amendments to increase the dwelling unit limit in Newport Center. That includes the subject application tonight for 150 Newport Center, as well as a proposed application for the OC Museum House of 100 units. So as mentioned previously, this proposed project would incorporate additional residential beyond what is already allowed in the general plan, but would incorporate residential in keeping with the goal in close proximity to some of the existing commercial and service uses that are important to the goal and vision for Newport Center. So next, we'll move on to the zoning code amendment and the requested planned community development plan. Here's a quick look at the existing zoning code map. You can see the property, again designated with the blue star. The current designation is OR, it's Office Regional Commercial. The change would be to establish a planned community on this specific property, separate planned community, that would be specific for 150 Newport Center. I'd like to note here that a request for the waiver of the 10-acre minimum is required. You can see this is the section from the zoning code that suggests that 10 acres of improved land area should be provided in order to establish a planned community. However, the same code provision allows, provides a process with which to waive that minimum acreage, where it says below, "The council may waive these minimum acreage requirements." So that is the request this evening, to waive that minimum acreage. The project site is 1.3 acres. There are a member of planned communities that currently do not exceed the 10-acre minimum. We have 59 established planned communities in the city. Of those, about 12 do not meet the 10-acre minimum. 12 of those that are under the 10-acre size are, I'm sorry, four of those 12 that don't meet the 10-acre size are located in the Newport Center area. Those include the Santa Barbara Condominiums, now known as Meridian, the San Joaquin Plaza Plan Community, the Armstrong Garden Plan Community, and the Block 500 Newport Center Plan Community. So as we've discussed at the previous study session, there are no required findings to waive the 10-acre minimum to establish a planned community, but it is important to look at the purpose of a planned community when reviewing and considering this decision. So part of, this is the purpose stated here from the zoning code. First is to look at the classification and development of land, the diversification of uses in the area, and the establishment of a development plan and text materials. So the requested application for a planned community would bring additional residential uses in proximity to existing commercial, retail, and recreational uses. It results in a reduction in traffic impacts to the area and locates housing in the Newport Center area near jobs, as identified in the vision for Newport Center. It also brings in a diversification of uses since the Newport Center area is predominantly commercial at this time. And a planned community plan and text materials have been prepared, which provide a very specific set of development standards for this project. Moving on to the proposed project height. So when considering project height, it's important to look at whether the height limits are appropriate for that area. And considering that, we look at the height limits established by the zoning code and general plan. We look at height, existing building heights, whether those are existing, are conforming or non-conforming, and also general plan policies in place that suggest whether that height is appropriate for that location. So this is a section of the zoning code that establishes heights for different areas of the city. And it, this is the procedure section of that code. We have base height limits, as well as upper maximum height limits that can be approved through a discretionary approval. And in order to increase the height limit, it very specifically states that height limits established as part of the adopted planned community are not subject to the base height limits and upper maximum height limits in the zoning code. So it's essentially exempt from that particular section of the code. This is still, a planned community is a legislative amendment, so it is still establishing code, and it, the findings to increase the height are still required. So we have examined the required findings to increase the current height limit on the property. There is a general plan policy that is relevant to the Newport Center area regarding development scale. It suggests that higher buildings should be located at the north end of Newport Center and progressively scaling down the mass and height to follow lower elevations toward the south-westerly edge of Newport Center. It doesn't prescribe specific building heights for what is high and what is low, and that's where it's important to look at those existing height limits and building heights to understand what that means and whether the request that's being made tonight is appropriate. So we've shown this exhibit before. This is the existing height limit in the south end of Newport Center. You can see the property is located in block 100. The properties in the center of block 100 have a higher height limit of 50 feet with additional 10 feet allowed for appurtenances. This is the highest height limit in block 100. The current height limit for the property is 32 feet for a flat roof, 37 feet for a sloped roof, which is the standard for typical commercial zones in the rest of the city. So you can see block 200 and block 300 have the same height limit as the current height limit for the property. It is 32 feet for a flat roof, 37 for a sloping roof. So the applicant's request this evening is for a height of 65 feet 6 inches to the top of the roof and 69 feet 6 inches to the top of mechanical equipment. You can see that is a little bit taller than the current height limit in block 100, at the highest upper height limit in block 100. So next, we'll take a look at the existing building heights. And we've gone ahead and pulled the existing building plans for each and every building in the south end of the Newport Center area. Where building heights were not called out specifically on the building plans, we've identified the number of stories for that building. So this is pretty much as specific as it can get in looking at the existing heights for the area. You can see there are a number of buildings, particularly in the block 200 and 300 area. 200 is here, and 300 is up here. Both of those areas have a number of buildings that exceed the current flat height limit of 32 feet. All of the buildings in this area are flats. They're subject to the 32-foot height limit. Where there were not specific heights called out here from the building plans, we next go to the LiDAR data, which is essentially a laser shot down from an aerial view to get a better approximate look at the height for the buildings. So some of the buildings over in block 200 here and here did not have heights called out. And so this LiDAR data gives us a better idea of whether or not those current building heights comply. And you can see there are a couple of those buildings that do exceed the height limit. So I've identified those buildings in both block 200 and 300 that currently exceed the 32-foot height limit. They do range in height from just over 32 feet all the way up to 74 feet 4 inches, as identified on the current plan at 260 Newport Center Drive. So we considered very carefully the height range of those buildings, as well as the height limit on the existing block 100, and what the upper range, what upper range is appropriate for this project, since they are seeking a higher height limit. This is the site plan for the applicant's requested project at six stories. You can see the property line in red there, with the building footprint in blue here. And we'll take a look at the setbacks in bulk in just a moment. And here is a view of the elevation of the applicant's requested height. Once again, this is the established grade at 164. It does take an average of the four corners of the site. And the building height is at 65 feet 6 inches. Up to the top of the mechanical equipment is 69 feet 6 inches. We'll take a quick look at the roof. The mechanical equipment is higher, but it is centralized to the center of the building to really minimize the view and scale of the building from the street level. Staff is recommending a lower height based on our review of the height limits and existing building heights for the surrounding blocks. The applicant has identified that they can, they are, it's feasible to lower the proposed project down to 55 feet to the top of the roof, with mechanical equipment up to 61 feet. This does maintain the requested number of dwelling units, at 45 dwelling units, but it does minimize the setbacks along the street frontages. And it creates a larger footprint, but a lower building profile overall. And one other thing, the applicant has noted that with this lower design, it does result in fewer amenities to the residential project, fewer common amenities available, and it does result in a smaller entry driveway along Anaquin, shown here with the arrow. So this is a quick comparison of the building mass and scale between the requested six-story project and the reduced five-story project. So first, just very quickly, there is a basement that that does not change with either the six-story or five-story project. They do have 15-foot setbacks along the street frontage and zero feet along the westerly edge of the property, and also 15 feet along the south driveway. The majority of the basement occurs below grade. There is a portion at the south end of the property that does project above grade. That is something we can discuss more specifically when we look at the site design. But today, we're really looking closely at the height and the results of the building mass and scale. So I'd like to focus your attention on the building setbacks. So the requested setbacks for the six-story are 24 feet off of Newport Center Drive, 22 feet 6 inches off of Anaquin. You can see the south driveway is 22 feet. And those setbacks are all reduced slightly with the reduced five-story building. The footprint is slightly larger to create that lower profile and maintain the same number of units. However, it does maintain 15-foot setbacks from each of the street frontages, 15 feet off the south driveway, and 10 feet off the westerly setback. The existing setbacks for the property, as designated under the OR zone, are 15 feet on the street frontages along Anaquin Drive and Newport Center Drive, and zero feet along the south driveway and westerly edge of the property. So you can see, in either circumstance, the residential designations will create a larger setback than the current zone of a commercial, the commercial zone. So this is an elevation based on staff's recommended height for the project. So from the average grade, the same established grade of 164 feet in elevation, the project height is 55 feet to the top height is 55 feet to the top of the roof and 61 feet to the top of the mechanical appurtenances. And that allows 6 feet for mechanical appurtenances. Again, those are centered towards the center of the building to minimize the bulk and scale of the project from the street level view. That's the 164. So here is a rendering prepared by the applicant of staff's recommended reduced height. This is kind of an aerial view, and then also we have a street view. So you can see that the majority of the mechanical appurtenances are really not very visible from this lower height at the street level. So in going on to look at the general plan policies and whether the requested height at 55 feet is appropriate, we have looked closely throughout this process, through the EIR process and through the public hearing process to see whether or not this is consistent with general plan policy. The general plan policy for public views protects public views and protecting where feasible enhanced significant scenic and visual resources. So this, these are the public view corridors and coastal viewpoints identified in the general plan. So we've really focused our attention on looking at these view corridors and viewpoints in both the EIR and our review of the project itself. In all cases, we found that the view impacts are less than, less than significant. We did include the view simulations on the 49-unit seven-story project with the staff report this time in the packet so that you can see what the view simulations look like from these locations. However, we have not had revised simulations prepared from these specific locations yet for the reduced project height at six stories or the reduced height of five stories. But we can definitely have those for the August 4th hearing. This is one quick view that was prepared, the applicant's requested height of six stories. This is actually taken from a residential private property and not from the public right of way along MacArthur, but it's very close to that location, so we thought it was worth showing how much of the project would be visible from, from this location. So you can see a portion of the building is visible, however, it's not obstructing any coastal views. It is largely obstructed by trees and existing development in front of it. I had not heard that before this, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Please note that, staff, thanks.
Moving along. So we are required to review the required findings for an increase in height. Although this is a legislative decision, we're looking closely at the findings for an increase in height. And staff has reviewed this, feels that the proposed project does provide additional landscaping and setbacks beyond the existing building setbacks. Public views are protected through the proposed project. They do not further obstruct public views. The architectural design does, is consistent with commercial development in the area. It will not appear out of place. It does have a very, uses light shadow recess planes to make it consistent and create that visual interest suggested by the, the required findings. And finally, we've looked very closely at the height and feel the 55-foot height to the top of the roof is appropriate and it won't result in an abrupt scale change given the height limits and scale of existing buildings in the area. So to date, a total of 42 public comments have been submitted for this public hearing. Several, eight of those 42 comments were associated with the draft EIR, but we're really focused on the land use amendments and changes, so we included them tonight for your consideration. There are a number of draft EIR comments that have also been submitted, but we will be providing those comments as well as responses, formal responses to comments at the August 4th hearing when we discuss the draft EIR in more detail. And at this point, I wanted to hand it back over to Kimberly Brant. She wanted to give a quick discussion in a little more detail about the general plan
One moment, I just want to bring up another PowerPoint. So whenever we have a proposed general plan amendment, we are required by the city's charter, charter to prepare an analysis to determine whether or not this, the amendment is what's called a major amendment. And a major amendment is defined by the city's charter in Section 423. And that section analysis, or oftentimes in our staff report, we refer to it as the Section 423 analysis. It's also referred to as Measure S, and it's also referred to as green light. So when you hear those phrases being used, it's all referring to the same section within the city's charter, 423. So by definition, through the city's charter, a major amendment is defined as a general plan that exceeds one of the following thresholds. Whether it creates more than 100 peak hour trips, be it in the morning or in the evening, which is referred to as traffic, whether or not the amendment creates or results in 100 additional, more than 100 dwelling units, which is referred to as density, or over 40,000 square feet of floor area, which is referred to as the intensity. It's important to note that these thresholds are applied by statistical area and that these thresholds are cumulative. So it's important to put that into perspective, that a statistical area within the city, there are over 50 of them, and they range in size. If you can see in this scale, it's a little difficult. Balboa Island has three statistical areas. Newport Coast is all of one statistical area. And the area that we're going to be looking at tonight is Newport Center, which is L1 right here, which is just about that big. So when is a vote required or a green light vote required for an amendment? And that is, happens if any one of those thresholds is exceeded, which includes, which includes all of the previously approved amendments in that statistical area over a 10-year period. So you can see there are a lot of factors involved in here's. So it's important to note that voter approval is required for the project that causes the threshold to be exceeded, not the previously approved projects, but the project that causes those thresholds to be exceeded. And again, the threshold calculation includes 80% of the cumulative total of the previously approved amendments, and voter approval, voter approved amendments are not included in this cumulative total. So that's why you have a planning staff. Our, our division does track each statistical area and has charts, such as the one above, which is the Newport Center statistical area that tracks all of the previously approved amendments. And these are located on the city's website and are available to be reviewed at any time. So how does it work? And I have come up with this graphic illustration, the buckets, to try to illustrate how these thresholds and how the, the projects approved and how it works together. So you have to imagine each threshold is a bucket. So we have the 100-unit threshold bucket, which is density, the 40,000-square-foot bucket, which is intensity, then you have 100 morning peak hour trips and 100 PM peak hour trips. Once a bucket is filled, voter approval is required for a general plan amendment. Otherwise, or known, just to say that that is a major general plan amendment. So for Project 1, just presume Project 1 is approved and it's below the threshold limits. Now, it doesn't matter what the numbers are, but in this scenario, all of the project limits are under or within the threshold established by the charter. So therefore, no voter approval is required. So going forward, Project 1 is reduced by 20%, and those numbers remain in that bucket for 10 years. So at some next event, some timeframe later, in the same statistical area, Project 2 is proposed or comes forward to the city for consideration. And let's presume that that project is approved. So here it is, again, the numbers aren't important, it's just below the bucket threshold. There's some square footage involved in this general plan amendment, and it results in additional 100 evening or PM trip hours, trips added to the system. So by itself, Project 2 doesn't require or doesn't trip any of the thresholds. But when it's put in the bucket with Project 1, then the threshold is exceeded. And it only needs to be one threshold, it doesn't need to be all four, it's just one. So Project 2 would require a vote. So what are the bucket numbers for Newport Center? So currently, in gold, Newport Center, the density bucket or the 100-unit bucket is completely empty, and so there's, the threshold is 100 units. There's already been a previously approved general plan amendment for the, the intensity bucket, so the current limitation or the previous general plan amendment was 16,800 after it was reduced by 20%. So the remaining square footage available is 23,200 square feet. Both the morning and the evening peak hour trip buckets are completely empty, so there's 100 trips available in each bucket. So what would happen if the 150 Newport Center Drive project is approved by city council at the projects, the applicant's request of 45 units? It would place 45 units in the 100-unit bucket, and it would place nothing in the intensity bucket because that's only for non-residential projects. The increase in trips in the morning is two trips, and there is no increase in the evening trips when compared to the existing conditions. So only two trips would be added to the morning bucket. So if that project is approved, those numbers would be reduced by 20%. And so the remaining, so those would be the reduced numbers. We did not reduce the two trips to anything below two trips because we don't deal with fractions, and so we would just leave that at two. And these numbers would remain, these two new numbers would remain in those buckets for 10 years. So the revised Newport Center threshold numbers would be 64 units in the density bucket. The 23,200 square feet would remain the same. It would be 98 morning trips in the trip bucket, and then 100 evening trips in, in the remaining bucket. So I do want to make one comment about the Charter 423 analysis. That is the process for determining whether an amendment is a major amendment and requires voter approval. But really, what takes precedent here is that a general plan amendment is being proposed, and that's a policy change or legislative change to the city's documents. And that's what's being considered, and I think primarily, and that that is what is the question that's before the planning commission and ultimately by the city council. And once that determination is made, then the, then the charter analysis comes into play. The policy question really is the primary question that's before you this evening. And with that, I'll conclude. I believe, McConaughey, do you have anything further? I think we're ready to open it up for questions.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I think we all appreciate that excellent presentation that you prepared. So it provides good context, good background, and is, was very informative. Obviously, you know, this is a, what I affectionately call a tier-one project for our city. That means basically, the more time I spend on having to wade through all these issues and meet with people and whatnot, the higher it is on my tier. And so, so, so this is something that definitely is taking a lot of time, which is good. And that's what we're here for. I feel like it's our civic duty as planning commissioners to make sure we really dedicate the time necessary to understand these applications. So tonight, because of the complexity of this project, the public hearing is divided, is bifurcated, it's divided into two nights. So tonight, we're only going to review as staff has presented the legislative issues. So those include the general plan amendment, the code amendment, and the plan community development plan. The other items that are, will be discussed at the next hearing, and those include the site development review, the tenant track map, the development agreement, and the EIR. So I would appreciate if we pay attention to the parameters of tonight's meeting, that is just those, those legislative acts. So I have a couple of questions, but I wanted to let the other planning commissioners go first. So Mr. Hillgrind, do you have any, do you'd like to start with? Wait, okay. Commissioner Kettin?
Yes, okay. I'm going to jump around a bit because of the way that your presentation went, which was excellent, by the way, thank you. Would you explain to us and to me, North Newport Plan Community, what does it entail? What properties?
Sure, let me see if I can find a good exhibit for that first. We'll use this. So North Newport Center include, is a separate plan community. It encompasses the Fashion Island area, incorporates portions, the middle portion of Block 100, portions of Block 800, block, this block here, what is that, 500? 400, sorry, 400? And then this upper block here. Yes. Oh yeah, the zoning map, that's, let's go to the zoning map. There you go, everything in PC 56 there is the North Newport Center Plan Community. So you can see, it does encompass a very broad portion of Newport Center. A very good chunk of that is owned by a single property owner, the urban company, but that is a very large area.
Which leads to my next question. At some time, it was, Block 100 was put into the Newport North Plan Community. Why weren't these other four parcels on the other, on the, on the outside of Block 100 also put in for consistency purposes?
So this was an amendment made at the request of the property owner, the urban company, to incorporate that portion into the plan community for North Newport Center. So they asked specifically for that.
And so, and when did that occur?
2009.
But as planners for the city, wouldn't you have looked at that and said, I think it's more appropriate, as with some of these other parcels, to bring everything in, in Block 100? So it's consistent, there's, there's some height limit benefits in Block 100 in that core area, which on another graphic was yellow, 50 feet. And the four outside pieces of this were left at 28, 30, somewhere in there? That's, I'm curious, maybe you weren't here then, but why that didn't occur? That's a little history. What's the vision for Fashion Island, going way back?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Vice Commissioner Kettin?
What's the vision? The general, you mentioned some language in the general plan about the vision from the beginning.
Right.
Urban planning of it, and then fulfillment of it through development and development changes.
This is the vision in the general plan for the Newport Center area as a whole, not necessarily specifically for Fashion Island. But this is the vision here. But this is the vision here, and it does identify incorporating mixed-use districts, and incorporating residential uses into the subregion for that close work proximity.
And I think, just to tag on to what McConaughey is saying by Sherkettin, is that Fashion Island itself was always seen to be a regional shopping destination that served not only just Newport Beach, but, you know, Orange County, and of course, it's grown to be an international destination. But again, the whole Newport Center was always intended to be a mixed-use district from the very earliest days.
In that vein, it appeared, what I read, was higher density up into the northern area.
Higher intensity.
Intensity as well. Heights and bulk. And as you drop down, topography-wise too, in Block 100 and others, it was to be two and three-story, et cetera, that we've seen grow over the last 30, 40 years, 50 maybe.
Correct, and that's where you do see the concentration of the high-rise buildings closer to San Joaquin Hills Road, and in that area. And I think that even the overall intensity is much more in that quadrant, or even upper half of Newport Center. It's as you come down, and you're in the southern, the southerly quadrants, you have a much lower scale of development.
Then that leads to the question of, then why did staff recommend approval of this at 65, or maybe it's 55 now, on a change? Why deviate, then?
As I mentioned, there's not a specific height given on the high end and the low end of what is high and what is low. And so that's why we look closely at what those existing developments are in the surrounding development, and whether the density and intensity, the height, are appropriate for that area. And that's why we've made the recommendation we have here.
Mr. Chairman, I have others I'll pass for a moment.
Sure, yeah. So I think, you know, one of the important things to point out here is that, you know, we're look, you know, we have to look at the holistic land use plan for Block 100, within the larger context of Newport Center. And there's different, you know, tools to guide us, you know, to making a decision here. But I think, you know, what Ms. Brant was saying at the end is, in a way, we have to plow some new ground here, and kind of forge into the area of creating some policy here. And so, that's why, you know, it's important that we really dig into this, and see, you know, what's best for Block 100. And there is some inconsistency there, obviously. You have the North Newport Plan Community there that's in the, takes up the majority of Block 100, that has a certain height limit of 50 feet, with 10 feet in addition for appurtenances. And then you have, you know, the four corners, which is 32 feet plus appurtenances, which also, you know, is in Block 200 and 300. But there's, you know, anomalies within Block 200 and 300. You know, going back to the early 70s, for example, building 260, I think it is, was built in 1974, and I believe that is 65 feet. So I don't know the history on why that is higher than what the height limit is. I'm not sure if you know that either. But what I'm trying to get at is there's certain, you know, buildings that deviate from the standard, yeah. So, so it causes a bit, it's a bit of a mess. It's rather confusing, and so, you know, it leaves it to the discretion, I think, at the end of the day, of the planning commission to kind of wade through this and make a recommendation to City Council. So, to repeat, I think it's very important that we look at a holistic approach here for not only Block 100, which is a very important part of Newport Center. It's the gateway from the south into the heart, the core of the mixed-use development. And then also, Newport Center in general, which is a very, very important part of our city, and our region as well. So, a couple of things. Now, the first threshold is the general plan amendment. And, you know, going from, you know, regional office to RM. I don't have a problem with residential. I think residential is completely appropriate here in Newport Center. It's in line with the general plan vision from the beginning, that this be a mixed-use area. It's important for walkability and lifestyle that multiple types of uses be together within Newport Center. So I don't see the applicant's desire to make this residential an issue. I would call to attention of staff, you know, there are alternates to having this be amended to designation RM. There could be MU, for example, which would be a broader designation that would allow for residential. So I'm curious, you know, why that wasn't proposed.
That's a question. Mixed use could work here. It, like you said, it allows for a broader spectrum of development. So we felt that the applicant is requesting the RM specifically, and it is more restrictive than the MU. So we didn't feel that necessarily mixed use was necessary, that has a higher density typically, even than an RM's district, so.
Well, I'm just curious why, perhaps the applicant can address that. And from a planning perspective, I mean, that may be a more appropriate designation here than with the more narrow RM, given that the broader range within mixed uses and residential can be allowed within that. So that's a point. Second is the waiver of the 10-acre plan community, I really find is troublesome. I think it creates, you know, an issue that some call spot zoning, and it's a tool that should be used sparingly, with appropriate deft, when it's needed. And in this case, you know, the applicant parcel is, you know, close to one and a half acres, and the zoning code states that the norm is a minimum 10 acres. So, we're looking at, you know, a pretty big deviation from the 10-acre standard, which I find troublesome. So, it's hard for me to accept that. And I think it would be wise to look at alternatives to that. And I think Commissioner Kettin was perhaps alluding to that, that we can look at other plan communities within the statistical area of Newport Center, including perhaps North Newport, or Meridian, or Granville, or these other particular residential plan communities as an appropriate alternative. So in a way, that this 150 Newport Center parcel would be incorporated into an already existing plan community development. So I would like to have some discussion on that with staff.
Incorporating the proposed plan community into the PC 56 North Newport Center is certainly a possibility. We would have to, you know, look at modifying the document a little bit, but we could create a sub-area to that existing document in that existing area. So there are a number of sub-areas in each block. We would suggest that this should be its own sub-area within that existing PC. Should you feel that's more appropriate than this project having its own plan community?
I don't think I've, since I've been on the planning commission for five or six years, I don't think we've done a sub-area in a planned community development. Maybe we have, I don't know. But it's, that's a possibility, is that your saying?
Yes.
It is.
You'd have to walk me, walk us through how that would work.
We would be happy to do that. We could provide the form for that type of, for that plan community. Because it's important to know that North Newport Center does have non-contiguous areas within it. So it would not, I do like the idea that if you do want to incorporate it into an existing plan community in Newport Center, that it be North Newport, because it would be contiguous to the other property in Block 100. So that would be my recommendation.
But at the same time, I'd like for staff to look at the other residential plan community, residentially dominated plan communities that are in Newport Center. So can you pull up the map that shows those? Because I believe, just offhand, the other ones are...
The Meridian.
Yeah, Meridian, which is PC 54. And then Granville, which is, what is?
Granville's not a plan community, but it is an RM zone.
Okay, well, maybe you could take some cues from that as well. Okay, so a little bit of homework there. Okay, height. So, so this parcel, 150, is actually the highest, I think it's the highest part of Block 100. I may be wrong on that, but it's definitely, its grade is higher than its neighbor's parcels. So whatever building gets built on that parcel is going to be, by nature, higher than its neighbors, because of the higher grade. And I'm not sure if the applicant's proposal for the building, we could get into that probably the next public hearing, but I was there at the car wash the other day, because I do use the car wash, so. And I was looking around, and, you know, it's a little bit lower than, it's kind of below the grade of Newport Center and Anacapa. So there could even be, you know, additional fill there to create the grade that's higher. So, so there are opportunities, you know, to make this, you know, the grade, you know, there is some significant differential between its neighbors and this parcel in terms of base height. So North Newport is 50 feet, so with 10-foot appurtenances. The applicant's asking for 65 feet in the six-story version. So that's a 15-foot differential from North Newport. And then you add on, you know, the existing, the higher grade. So in terms of, you know, the actual height from the corner there, in comparison to its neighbor parcels, there would definitely, you know, be, you know, more than 15 feet in terms of top of roof. So I'm trying to figure out, get my arms around, how staff came up with 55 feet, which is five feet more than North Newport. Is it just simply lobbing off 10 feet from the 65 and reducing one story, or what? Because it would have made more sense, I think, you know, to either start at 50. So, if you have some comment on that.
We did meet with the applicant and suggested 50-foot height limit, consistent with the current middle of Block 100. The applicant indicated that removing a story would put it right at 55, and that was really more feasible to make the project feasible. With the mechanical appurtenances, it's at 61, which is very, very close to the overall height for the height limit in the middle of Block 100, which is 60 feet, including appurtenances. So we felt that that was close and appropriate enough to recommend approval for that height.
I have a real problem with the five-story version. I just can't support a building with reduced setbacks and the driveway issues. I just think that's just a troublesome building. So I, you know, I just, I don't know. So it comes down to a, an issue, I think, at the end of the day, you know, the number of units that are appropriate on the site, along with the height. So I think some discussion of that is appropriate. And, you know, I'm not sure that, you know, 45 units is the right number, or even 49. So, you know, I think, you know, among the planning commission, we can have that as an object of discussion. Okay, other planning commissioners? Commissioner Wagen?
Yes, you had mentioned in the beginning that we would be addressing the first of three or four of the items that were. But I think neglecting the environmental impact report, the draft, there was, I heard that there was 26 or something letters that were written in response to that, or I don't know how many, because I've never seen them, and I don't think the public's seen them, I don't think anyone's seen them. But I got my hands on one of the letters that was written by the Irvine Company. And in it, it talks about this PC district. It says the entire block should be considered in determining, the Block 100 should be determined, meaning the height increase is a foreseeable consequence in the proposed project. And so it really goes into detail here, saying, you know, if you're going to do it for them, you're going to have to do it for us, type thing. So, you know, I think that is important for us as planning commissioners and the public, and for everyone to get these documents as soon as they come in. And I don't know if you have them in hand now, but I have my hands on one, and it talks about a lot of things. It talks about the moving vans that I brought up last meeting, and that the smaller driveway at the entrance is where they said that they would have these moving vans. Well, if now that there's a smaller driveway, is that going to be sticking out into the pedestrian walkway? Is that, you know, how is that going to be impacted? So I think that it's important for us to be able to see those documents. And I frankly don't think that if we're going to get them tomorrow, you know, that's 14 days, and if there's 40-something letters, that's a lot of documentation to review in two weeks' time to then make a decision on this. And I think that that should be something we have...
Well, I mean, we're not forced to make a decision, so.
No, no, but if the recommendation from staff so far is to say in two weeks that we're going to be voting on this.
Oh no, it's also mine. I mean, I want, like I said at the beginning, these are, this is a complicated project, and we bifurcated the issue into two nights.
Sure, sure, and I understand, but that, this item here related to the PC zone district is directly discussing what you just brought up. And in fact, the letter even mentions here, it tells you that the project site is located at the highest elevation within Block 100. So that answered your question there. If you had that information in advance, you wouldn't have...
Well, I didn't, I don't have the letter, and I didn't read it.
But that's why I think...
There are a number of comment letters that were submitted with the draft EIR. We felt it was more appropriate to prepare formal responses to comment, and have them appropriately reviewed, to really go do a thorough response before we go forward with those. And that's why we are holding those till August 4th. So we have put forward the ones that we don't think are sequer-related, or don't include sequer-related comments. But all of those that we do feel are important to the DEIR document, we are preparing responses and will have for August 4th. The other comment letters have been included for your consideration this evening, since they're mostly related to the land use and the height only.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure we have enough time as commissioners to decide.
I totally understand, and I agree with you. I totally agree. Commissioner Dunlap?
McConaughey, just a couple of clarifications. One, in the beginning of the report, it has 1.3 acres, and then back in page eight, it says 1.26. Just, which one is it?
It's just rounding, 1.26 rounds up to 1.3, so.
Okay, all right.
Whether you want to go two decimals or one.
Too much reading.
I remember learning that in third grade, but okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
And then the EIR, and I know we're not talking about the EIR specifically tonight, was, was review, or put together with the 45-unit shorter building that staff's recommending, or with the larger project?
It reviewed a larger project at 49 units and seven stories. It included a consideration of alternatives. The six-story that is requested by the applicant today was one of the lower alternatives discussed in the EIR.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Lawler?
I just have two quick, two quick questions. Chair Kramer's point on the Plan Community Development Plan, the, I understand the rationale for the waiver is somewhat subjective, and we're going from 10 acres to effectively 13% or 12.6% of the actual acreage. And you had mentioned that there are 12 that don't meet the standards of 10 acres. Can you give us a sense just what the order of magnitude of the 12 that don't meet it? How big are those sites? I think it's relevant, because I agree with Chair Kramer. It's a pretty big deviation, and it'd be good to know what that deviation is for the 12 that were granted.
Sure, the lowest one ranges from 0.76 acres all the way up to, let me find the highest, 6.63...
Sorry.
Oh, 9.63 acres, so almost to the 10, so really the full range in the spectrum.
And of that range, you got, is there, are there a bunch that are around an acre, or there's one that's around an acre?
I see about five, almost half of them that are under an acre, or under two acres, let's put it that way.
And are any of those in Newport Center?
Armstrong Garden is 1.11 acres.
And just to add on that, I want to make sure the public, and maybe even me, what are the advantages for the Plan Community Development Plan? Why would one choose to do this specifically?
It creates a really specific set of standards, so part of that is the height in, it doesn't, the typical base height limit and upper height limit. It gives the project the ability to establish its own standards for setbacks, for height, for pretty much the entire development. We do look at the RM standards in the other surrounding areas as a guideline in establishing those standards, but it provides a lot more flexibility because it is a legislative document. So that's really the main goal. And part of the reason for looking at a separate plan committee is because in this area, it would create really specific standards for this project, whereas when we looked at the North Newport Center area and the current residential standards, they're, they're not very specific, they're very, very broad and open-ended, and we felt that really defining the standards to make a good product for this residential development was, was really important for this.
So maybe just to say it a little differently, so basically what it does is you have set standards in that specific area, but if you get a Plan Community Development Plan, you get much more density and higher heights.
You can, it provides that flexibility to do that.
Okay. And then, one more question, just on the, on how the 100 units work in the, in the section 423 and the Green Light Initiative. So what's the, the 80% factor? So I understand that you can do 100 units in 10 years, but if you did 100 units now, you actually can end up doing like 120 units, is that right? So how does that work? Because I know we're going to get a lot of questions on it, so I just, we might as well just answer it right now, because it, it almost seems like if you're in the public, or if you're me, and you don't understand it, that it's like a loophole to do 120 versus 100.
Commissioner Lawler, that is how the charter language is written, is that once a general plan amendment is approved, and the four different thresholds are reduced by 80% and kept on the cumulative project list for 10 years. And the, so it does allow cumulatively over time that you could get more than 100 units or 40,000 square feet. It's just how the math works out in terms of how the, which projects are approved and the numbers as they come down. So it's not like you would get double the, 200 units, but you will get an incremental percentage over 100 units because of the, because of the 80% reduction. So that's part of the charter, that's how the initiative was drafted and adopted by the, by the voters.
And because there's a lot of letters and stuff, and talking about the gray area in this, so that, that 20% buffer, how does that reduce over a 10-year period? So for example, we all know there's another project coming, and there's 45 units and 100 units, it's 145 units. Theoretically, 120 could be approved, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen. But then how does, how does that work? The 20% is reduced evenly over 10 years? So is the 80%, how does that, because it seems like it's confusing, and I'm not really understanding how that...
Right. So the, each project, as it's approved, presuming it's not a major amendment, and we're not, and we are putting it in the threshold bucket, and it doesn't require a vote, then it's reduced at the time, like, first you approve it, and then it's reduced by 80%, and it goes in the bucket, so to speak. So it's not reduced over time, it's an immediate reduction, and it goes on to that, into that chart that was in my PowerPoint presentation, and it's left there for 10 years.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thanks. Following up a little bit on Commissioner Lawler, the other planned communities, is there a common thread as to why they were granted that status?
Not exactly. A lot of them are very old, and they're just very old.
I think, yeah, we're kind of in the dark on that, and I know you have your little crib sheet over there, but I think we need to understand, you need to put some light on this, so. I mean, .7 or something, I don't know, I mean, where is that? And when was that? What's the history of it?
Chair Kramer, what we can do when we return at, on the next planning commission meeting, is we can bring back to the planning commission options for the different planned communities within Newport Center, where if the commission wanted to include this area within those section, within those planned community, we'll bring you that option and show you what that would entail. We'll also give you a breakdown on the smaller planned communities within the city that are, that don't meet the 10, 10-acre minimum, and we'll give you background when that was adopted, and if there were requirements at that time that...
Yeah, I mean, when was the 10, when was the 10-acre?
Right, that could have been put in...
Was that 2006?
2010, so I don't know that. So let me, let us provide that documentation, and we'll come back with that.
Thank you.
That'd be great. And then, talks about on handwritten five land use amendments, prior to considering project-specific design, the commission should consider whether the project site is appropriate for residential development. I can get my, my head around residential development within Newport Center for sure. Do we need to consider or evaluate other sites? Because one of the things that it also states on handwritten four, it's describing the general plan, Newport Center is a regional center of business and commerce that includes major retail, professional office, entertainment, recreation, and residential in a master-planned mixed-use development. And I'm a believer in looking at this master plan, particularly for Block 100, if we were to do this from a blank slate, this is not how we would master plan it necessarily. And so I'm wrestling with the, with what we're attempting to do here, and partly, I think, to what you're raising, and I'm not sure whether you're trying to conform this site to the rest of Block 100, or whether you're wanting to have the rest of Block 100 be conformed to whatever this commission decides is the right plan for this project. Because I think what we're doing has an impact both ways. I'm wrestling with, with where we're trying to go with this, and maybe you can clarify where you were headed, or that's going to be part of the conversation we're going to...
No, I think it's part of the conversation, I raised the point, I think it's a fundamental point. Basically, you know, we're making decisions here that have an impact going forward for Block 100 in particular, but also for Newport Center...
Right.
...in general. So obviously, you know, the 32-foot height limit was placed there for a reason, and perhaps you could give us some additional historical background on why that was chosen, going way back, but I would assume that it's because it goes along with, you know, tracks the initial vision of Newport Center going back to the 1950s, you know, and the whole cascading effect. So it's probably why it's that, but then, you know, there's been some changes to that over, over the years, so, like I said, it creates kind of a confused mess that I think in a way, we have a responsibility to set straight and clean up, and through that cleanup, we're actually creating, kind of, we're creating a new policy.
And are you going to set a time specifically to deal with height? Do you want some comments on height now, questions on height now?
I think that's, I think that's tonight, so that's the conversation.
Stuff's coming up.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, go ahead and raise whatever you like, I mean, I think that's...
Well, what I was, my thoughts in wrestling with this was why there would be restrictions on height. And obviously, I've heard and ad nauseam the concept of the Newport Center cascading down to Coast Highway, and I think that's a very handsome land plan that we all enjoy and is meaningful for the community. So being responsive to the master plan, I think, makes some sense. The other thing we hear about on height is views, and what does that do to views? And number one, is it a scenic or a protected view, and considering that policy? And the next one is, while it's not protected, it's a respected stance towards your neighbors, and whether you're impacting their view, and what it does to the, the general compatibility with the other properties. And I think a related factor on that is scale, and you can block someone's view by height, or you can block it by width. I think if you're at the ground plane, the wider you go, the more impactful you are. And so I think this thing may be more impactful short and wide than it is tall and thin. So when I think about planning, I'd almost start to advocate for, can you go 10 stories? So anyway, those are my thoughts as it relates to height, and conversation we might have...
I think that's the discussion I want to have, is, you know, what's, what's appropriate for this, for this parcel, for Block 100, and for Newport Center. Commissioner Kettin?
Thank you, Chairman Kramer. Kim, because I think it's at the top of everybody's list, or lists that are in the community, these 100 units in this area of the community, this statistical area, is that chiseled in stone? Is that done? Is everybody agreed? It's been, you know, the attorneys signed off? I mean, is that a non-issue? There are 100 or so units that could be built in this vicinity?
So the question, so the general plan does not have the 100 units available to statistical area L1 or Newport Center. The 100 units is tied to Charter Section 423 that says that there's a 100-unit threshold for every statistical area within the city that is, forms the basis of whether or not a general plan amendment is deemed a major amendment and requires voter approval.
In every, all 50-some?
All 50 statistical areas.
There's only 100 units left to build in the community? Or each statistical area gets rough?
No, they don't...
That's the trigger point.
So it's just a trigger, it's a threshold for deciding whether or not the general plan amendment, if it's approved by the city council, requires then voter approval. So it's a threshold, it's not saying that there's general plan capacity of 100 units in Newport Center, but rather, if a general plan amendment is proposed that wants to increase the capacity, we then consider the 100-unit threshold that's established by the city's charter, charter to determine whether or not voter approval would be required if city council approves it. And I know it's a very confusing concept, because I think why, another element to that confusion is, as McConaughey was saying, the general plan is the long-term development vision for the community. So you have existing development on the ground, but the general plan has what's called the ultimate build-out. So there's always an incremental difference between what's on the ground today and what could be allowed in the future, and that's development capacity within the general plan, which is, can be confused with the 100-unit dwelling unit threshold for the charter, for the voter approval of a general plan amendment. So it's two distinct ways of looking at numbers, and I know it's a bit confusing.
Well, no, you got that there.
To tag on to that, the only unbuilt capacity in this area are the five units at the Newport Beach Country Club.
Right.
So those are entitled but not built. So that means that there are no unentitled available units, so this is an increase.
And when did the 10 years start?
The, it's a rolling 10 years.
Oh.
So, so again, that's why you, you have your staff, who, and specifically, Senior Planner Greg Ramirez here, he is the keeper of the general plan amendments. So it's a rolling 10 years, and it goes on.
It's kind of like why we have CPAs, so that, you know, we can do our income taxes.
It's an actuary, a 10-year actuary.
It's the joy of government regulation.
Okay, and lastly, on this, are there any other sites, other than the one we're hearing about coming in, that are potentially residential sites in L1?
Not to our knowledge.
Okay, short of...
The 100 units.
Right.
We have an open application, discretionary application for the Orange County Museum House site, shown on this exhibit here in yellow.
Right. Short of somebody...
Other than that, no.
...tearing down buildings and recommending residential in lieu of that?
Not at this time, there are no other applications.
Thank you.
Would that be fun if someone else jumped in right now? Just create more chaos. Okay, Commissioner Kettin, anything else?
No.
Okay. Any other items from the commission? Okay, let's open up a public hearing. Does the applicant have a presentation?
We don't have a, Commissioners, Mike Lutton, I represent the applicant. We don't have a presentation tonight, we believe that was supposed to be the future session, but I just want to reiterate a couple of things. By the way, I thought it was a very healthy discussion tonight, and I applaud you, because I do believe it's, there are big issues involved, and I think that your approach to and your questions are very relevant to putting this to bed in a constructive manner. We initially proposed a seven-story building, the EIR was completed on a seven-story building. It shows no residential view impacts, it shows significant reduction of traffic, significant reduction of water. Subsequently to that, we came back and we said, we can go to six, and that's in the EIR, and we can go to six, and six works for us, because one, this building was put together not based on unit count, it was based on what fit the site appropriately, and consistent with the general plan, which one of the lines, as you saw and was mentioned, was to create a pedestrian-friendly environment. Well, the way you create a pedestrian-friendly environment is to have a building that has significant setbacks. So this building is designed that way, that has significant setbacks off of Anacapa, significant setbacks around the perimeter, and when you go to a five-story, staff recommends the five-story, it becomes an entirely different building, which we can go into at the next presentation. It changes the scope of the building, it changes the amenity of the building, it changes significantly the streetscape of the building by reducing the major setbacks almost in half. The reason staff is driving towards the 55, or 55-foot in general limit, is because that's what the Irvine Company already has in front. Would we love to be inclusive in a, in a general plan, or in a, in a planned community? Sure. It's the easiest way for us to work, but we were never asked to be in that. When I went to Peter Shea, and the family was in the car wash business for 50 years to buy this site, Peter Shea didn't sell this site, he sold the whole business. And the reason he sold the business, because the business is functionally obsolete, mainly because of labor costs, and mainly because of new technology, which you see by the new car washes that are popping up all over the place, that are effectively unmanned, that give you a better wash at a much better price. So the site is never going to be a car wash again, the site has to be something that's constructive and fits with the neighborhood. So we designed this project with that in mind, which to create something in Newport Center that didn't harm anybody from a view standpoint, that significantly reduced water, that significantly reduced the trips on the road, and the question would be, if you don't like this, and you don't like this from a standpoint of all those positive things that contribute to the community, then what do you want on the site? And so where we're at today is really, it's very simple. We have a very nice building design, it's very elegant, it's 49 units at six stories, it's 45 actually, at six stories. Most of these people are going to be in and out, almost never there. We've got a very good pedestrian-oriented environment, and we've got a wonderful product for the community that reduces all of the things that we've been fighting about, which is, again, traffic, water usage, all the things that everybody cares about. So hopefully, the next... water usage, all the things that everybody cares about. So, hopefully, the next discussion that we have, in regards to the project specifics, will be able to show you the differences between the two projects, because it does come down exactly to what you're talking about tonight, is what is the best product to fit on this site that benefits the community, and also is something that everybody's proud to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutton. Any questions of the applicant? Other public comments? Please come forward. Please keep your com... Please state your name, but like I said, please keep your comments narrowed to the issues we're talking about tonight, which are the Legislative Act, so regarding the general plan amendment, and the zoning code, and the planned community development. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Elaine Lynnhoff. I live on the Balboa Peninsula, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize there were restrictions on public comments, so I may stray out of sight of your boundaries.
Not trying to... Yeah, let me clarify. I'm not trying to restrict you. I'm just saying, what we're talking about tonight are the Legislative Acts.
I intend to talk about the general plan amendment.
Perfect, thank you.
So, we have a general plan. As I consider it the law of the city at this time. So, in this country, we have laws. If somebody wants a change of law, it's incumbent upon them to prove why the law should be changed. But it seems like in this city, we do things backwards. If a developer wants to come in and change the law, it's up to the opponents to prove why it's bad. It isn't up to the developer to prove the benefits to the city, or to the residents, the current residents, and the current businesses. The applicant's spokesman, spokesmans, we talked about reduce traffic. I have studied EIRs. I have not studied this one in detail, but I have found errors in traffic figures that have been put out, put forth in former EIRs, because I was on the EQAC committee for several years. The only benefit I can see for this is possibly revenue. I don't know how much more revenue will the city will get from this than what they do from the car wash and the gas station, but that's the only benefit that I can see for it. I'm sure there's other speakers who are going to speak to why this project is not good for the city, but the way I feel, unless... unless they can prove substantial benefits to the current residents and businesses in this city, this amendment should be denied.
Thank you. Next.
Enrique Gonzalez from the Vos. It seemed like exercise of futility to try to... A lot of money has been spent already. A lot of people has already made their mind, maybe, or maybe. And I think about the buckets. We have a bunch of half-full buckets all around there. I don't know how many buckets we fill with the apartments they're building in the other side of the center, but if we count all those buckets, we should be a lot of boating, or trying to make something of that. The other thing is, we spend a lot of time, I remember, I wasn't still involved with the city, with the master plan of the city. I spent years and arguments and nights and everything, people arguing about that. Suddenly, everybody's trampling over it. And I feel bad, because of spending a lot of money, but I don't feel bad, because they may be getting what they want. My idea is that the main concept is, if we're going to spend money and time on making plans and things like that, and then everybody will be trampling them, no sense of having hearings or everything like that, because it seemed like eventually with expenses and everything like that, it's going to be done. By the way, one thing that surprised me is that they're going to spend less water in the building than the car wash. Every city have a car wash that have recycling water, and it seemed like Newport Beach has never asked the car wash to recycle its water. Even 40%, 80% of the water, or 90% are requiring in most of the cities, and you're still letting them use that water like if it was nothing. And we have restrictions. Those are the things, I think. And I hope that the community is the one that decide, and they shouldn't allow the expenses to go so high for a person that wants to have an application, because it becomes harder and harder to avoid the project. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Tom Fredericks. I'm a resident of Newport Beach and have been for the last 39 years. I used to live on Balboa Island. I currently live in Irvine Terrace, directly across from Newport Center. I want to raise two issues regarding the staff report. It's... One of the things they mentioned was that the view restrictions, the... Talking about the car trips. Did the staff include, in their estimation of car trips for Newport Beach residents, all the people in Newport Beach that currently go to the car wash, who will now have to drive somewhere else, much further away through Newport Beach, another car wash? There's one in Laguna. There's one on Coast Highway. Those are the only two I'm aware of in Newport Beach. So, when you close this car wash, all the residents of Newport Beach who use those car washes, and we're all rich, we all get our cars washed, are going to go a lot further through Newport Beach. So, I can't believe that it's just two trips. The other thing is, I heard the contractor, the developer, indicate that there would... These people that are going to live in these residents would never go in or out in a car. Well, I don't think so. Half these residents are going to be over 50, is my guess. They're going to be very expensive, and they're not even going to walk to Newport Center. They're going to drive their cars, they can carry back their packages in their trunks. They're going to drive to a car wash. There are more residents that can't go to this car... You can't walk your car to the car wash. You've got to get in your car to go to the car wash. So, the idea that it's never... There's never going to be any more is just nonsense. It's palpable nonsense. And the last thing I noticed in the presentation was the discussion of the less-than-minimal, less-than-minimal footprint increase. Well, less-than-minimal, in my dictionary, is zero. Minimal is as low as you can go. Zero. So, it's just not correct. That's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Stephan, longtime customer of the car wash, former car wash owner. Number one, that car wash does recycle water. Number two, that car wash is going to... There's going to be a car wash there for probably our entire lifetimes. The management company that runs it for them right now is salivating to take over that car wash. It's a very, very good business, great location. It will never change. It will be a car wash. There's not going to be anybody coming up with any other plans. That's what it's going to be, and it's a great business, and the point the gentleman made was excellent.
Thank you. There's no reason for applause. It wasn't as funny as Mr. Fredericks, so...
Chair Kramer and Commissioners and staff, my name is Dennis Baker. I have some comments, and I actually prepared my comments based upon a letter. First of all, I'm also the treasurer of SPON, and so I am speaking for SPON tonight. I had... I am going to read some comments out of a letter that we sent to the Planning Commission. However, based on Commissioner Wagon's comments, you don't have it, which is from Chetan Brown, Carstens LLP. It was comments regarding the DEIR, which is interesting, because I just picked this up out in the lobby, and it contains this letter and all the comments you were referring to. So, if you'd like to have a copy, there's a copy for you. So, the points I wanted to make, because you will eventually see this letter, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights that I want to emphasize. So, this was a letter dated June 27, 2016. On page two, there's a reference to the planned community development plan is inappropriate and unnecessary for this project. Zoning code, section 20.56.010, provides for development of land as coordinated comprehensive projects in order to take advantage of the superior environment resulting from large-scale community planning. A planned community is intended to include various types of uses consistent with the general plan through the adoption of the development plan that identifies the land use and relationships, the PCD. Therefore, the PCD should be used to ensure consistency with the existing land use and to provide cohesive community. This does not meet that at all. There is a reason why a 1.26 acre needs to employ PCD to provide for a coordinated comprehensive project. I think that the reason actually is to skirt the requirements and a way to get around it. It's basically being used as a loophole. The granting of this project's application for the PC... for a PCD for a project that is up to six stories, agreed is being changed somewhat higher and much more intense in the use of the surrounding properties, based on a policy of ensuring land use consistency undermines the very integrity of the PCD district and the Newport Beach zoning code. This is a very bad precedent. The project's application for PCD, this is, again, it just doesn't meet it. And I... Chair Kramer, I know you had some concerns about that. The project is an example, a very, very egregious example of spot zoning, wherein zone and land use changes are applied to a single property. This is a single property. The applicant requests a land use change to a land use that differs from the provided... that provided for surrounding parcels, as has been explained, actually, in the presentation. Spot zoning is discouraged by the courts, because it thwarts comprehensive land use planning. So, basically, we are throwing out the general plan if you approve this. Okay, that's as far as I got. You will have to read them on your own. Sorry?
I'll give you 30 seconds.
I'm almost done. This project sets a precedent for relaxing height limitations in an area that has been developed with primarily two-story buildings. The project would also set a precedent for permitting use of PCDs to avoid existing land use restrictions for small parcels. And I'm like four more sentences. The comparison to the high-rise buildings located in the northern part of the Newport Center is misleading at best. This project is proposed for southerly section of Newport Center, intentionally planned as low-rise, and in order to maintain site plane. Finally, adverse cumulative impacts. One of the most important environmental lessons evident from past experience is that environmental damage often occurs incrementally from a variety of small changes. This is from Kings County Farm Bureau versus City of Hanford. This is a precedent-setting project.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Thank you for the extra time.
Sure.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Beth Kylie, and I want to tell you how impressed I am with all of your thoughtful comments, and this is my first foray into the public. However, I felt moved to come and discuss this with you tonight.
Thank you.
I am very concerned that this is a bad precedence. You have a general plan, which has a vision for the city that has been thoughtfully laid out. It provides for a quality of life that we all enjoy and would like to maintain. I think that by allowing a spot general plan amendment change is a very dangerous precedence. We're talking about the inconsistencies already seen from things that were done in the past, and the problem that creates. By approving individual projects and allowing for a general plan amendment change on an individual project, you risk... We've pointed it out, the properties next door are then going to want it, and it hasn't been thought through. This is a very risky business from the very get-go. That very starting point, before we get into the details, is a huge barrier that I do not believe should be passed on individual properties. Secondly, this is a 34-unit-per-acre project. That's a completely different vision for Orange County than what we live with now. If planning wouldn't mind putting up the zoning map, you will see we have R1, or RM, in Big Canyon and Granville. I would guess, what do you have? You have 69 units in that RM, and on the Big Canyon site, I think it was more than that. Those are probably 12 to 15 units per acre. This six- or seven-story building is going to be 35, 45 units per acre. That is going to radically change the lifestyle in Newport Beach. And if you approve this, and you approve the museum on an individual basis, you are setting precedence for a change in our lifestyle that's going to go forward. Their job is to maximize profit. Every story they can put up, and bless you for that, is just profit. They can do a two-story residential and be consistent with a mixed-use, you know, pedestrian-friendly thing. It doesn't have to be six stories. In negotiating, you start high, and you set the bar high. They're looking at highest and best use, which is maximum profit, and is very reasonable if you're the property owner. We are the Planning Commission. We are people in the community. Our job is to say, when you leave, what is going to be left? And is this how we want Newport Beach to be? I don't envy you your position. It's a very difficult position. But making a change to the general plan amend... to the general plan based on an individual project is very dangerous business, and I would certainly hope that you don't do it, and if you do do it, be consistent with the RM that already exists in the area. Downsize this to 15, 12 units per acre. Keep our vision of the 20-year plan in place, and don't be changing the nature of our community. I thank you for your time. You must be working very hard on this, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. I assume that applause is for us, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Chairman Kramer, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Debbie Stevens. I'm a resident of Cronin, Omar. First, I'd like to thank the staff for starting to take a hard look at this project. I like the idea that at least we're getting down a story. I think it needs to come down more than that, but... And I appreciate the Planning Commission, who's asked a lot of tough questions, and a lot of the ones that really and truly were on my mind, and I think there'll be some resolution to those. I don't support the waiver for the planned community development from 10 acres to 1.3. That's too big of a deviation, too much scale to ask for in this location. The height, I don't support the height either, because we've been told for many years that there's this view plane ordinance that applies to Fashion Island, or Newport Center, and the community has pretty much gone along with that. The higher buildings are in the back. There's been higher ones recently, but it's supposed to come down. And I think that in compliance with that, that the building should be the same height as the surrounding buildings. There are public views that are obstructed. The fact that those are from Fashion Island, for whatever reason, that's private property, it's looked at differently. But those are open to the public 24/7, frankly. So, there's no reason why those should be considered differently. When we talk about some of the alternatives to this project, and bringing down the height, the one thing that's been said is that it's not feasible, and the only feasible part of that is the economics. So, if that's been the reason why we're not doing some of these alternatives, I think the data needs to be there to support it. And it's not just an opinion, it's lay it out in facts. It costs X to develop it, it costs X to sell it, whatever. But the only alternatives that... Or the only reason the alternatives are not being considered is because of the economics, and I think that should be made public. I also think that, and somewhat gets into the EIR, but what other properties does this apply to? And I think some of the questions that you guys asked are getting at that, because that goes to the growth-inducing and cumulative impacts. If this developer can go up X amount of feet, then where... Why not the next developer? And there's probably other properties in Newport Center that this would apply to. I would reiterate what the last commenter just said, and that's... I don't want to see this kind of development and this kind of scale in Newport Center, and that's just my opinion on that. But I would also ask that... I did supply comments on the EIR itself, and I would appreciate that we get a chance to review that. Frankly, 10 days would be nice, so... And that's very soon, but I would appreciate some time for that. Thank you.
Chairman Kramer and yeah, Commissioner...
Chairman Kramer and, yeah, Commission and staff. My name is Lorian Petry, and I am a resident of Cronin, Omar. And I have my notes so I don't get too off-track. And so, I'm just going to start reading. Sometimes it's good that what we don't do speaks volumes and even saves us from heartache in hindsight. The strip of land between Avocado and MacArthur Roads where we sit tonight was originally slated to be an exit spur of the Pacific Coast Freeway. Someone looked forward. Phew. We do not sit on an exit of a freeway. The general plan was what I decided to revisit. The following, and it was established by vote in 2006, everybody knows that by now. The following describes the city's, oh, and I'm going to quote it literally. The following describes the city's desired end state and what the community hopes to have achieved by 2025. The general plan played an instrumental role in crafting this vision statement through a series of discussions and revisions, drawing upon public feedback from the visioning activities. The statement is intended to be a retrospective view of our community by an observer in the year 2025 to cite the city's achievements as a result of our current vision. So, think of it as looking back. What are we going to see in 2025 and say about our community? Number one, community character. We have preserved and enhanced our character as a beautiful, unique residential community with diverse coastal and upland neighborhoods. Number two, growth strategy. We have a conservative growth strategy that emphasizes residents' quality of life, a strategy that balances the needs of the various constituencies and that cherishes and nurtures our estuaries, harbors, beaches, open spaces, and natural resources. Development and revitalization decisions are well-conceived and beneficial to both the economy and our character. There is a range of housing opportunities that allows people to live and work in the city. And I loved it when Chairman Kramer looked over at Granville. It's a vision. Design principles emphasize characteristics that satisfy the community's desire for the maintenance of its particular neighborhoods and villages. Public view areas are protected. Trees and landscaping are enhanced. Protection of environmental quality is a high priority. We preserve our open space. We maintain access to and visibility of our beaches, parks, preserves, harbor, and estuaries. Traffic flows smoothly through the community. The transportation and circulation system is safe and convenient for automobiles and public transportation and friendly to pedestrians and bicycles. We provide parks, art, and cultural facilities, libraries, and educational programs. Newport Beach attracts visitors with its harbor, beaches, restaurants, and shopping. We are a residential and recreational seaside community and eager to share our resources with visitors without diminishing these irreplaceable assets in order to share them. With that, I will stop. But I think it's the vision that we're looking for from this commission, and I know you guys have it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Beek, and I hope you won't mind if I begin by giving a few compliments and appreciations. I thought that the applicant made one of the best statements I've ever heard. To begin with, it was short, it got right to the point, and boy, it put it to us. We, the opponents, have got some thinking to do to answer what he said. Congratulations, it was wonderful. I also want to express my appreciation to the other people who have spoken here. We haven't coordinated our presentations, but I hear some very, very constructive and intelligent conversation coming on. And I especially appreciate hearing that same kind of constructive and intelligent conversation from up there. You sound like planning commissioners trying to do some planning. I spent four years up there where you are, and there was never any of that kind of talk. It was, there were always four votes for what the developer wanted, and that was it. So, I really like what I'm hearing. And of course, I want to express my appreciation to the staff for those wonderful illuminated illustrations. Boy, I wish I'd had some of those to use in 2000 when we were trying to explain Measure S, Green Light. Anytime the staff wants to spend a half an hour, I'd be glad to explain how each of those words got crafted into Section 423. It's not altogether clear.
Maybe it should be amended at some point.
I hope you won't mind that I haven't been addressing what you said I should address this evening. You divided the topics up into tonight and next time, and the topic I'm going to address isn't on either one of those lists. The staff has done a wonderful job at dissecting the definition of a planned community and the definition of height and all the technical things that go into this, and they've picked the words apart, and they have done their darndest. They've done a wonderful job of showing that, yes, you can approve this project, it would be okay. They just really had to pull a rabbit out of a hat there with the definition of a planned community. To me, a community is residences and schools and parks and a grocery store and a drugstore. It's a community. They have a single building, and they're calling that a community. They're working very hard, but they haven't addressed in saying what, yes, yes, you can do it, but they haven't looked at the other end. There's no law that says you have to do something just because you can do it, and they have looked, have not looked at, should we do it? Do the people of Newport Beach want this? Is this what we're about? Is this what we're after? And of course, the answer is no. If they went out there, well, they should have been able to read Measure S and Measure Y, and even before Measure S, there was a referendum on Measure A, which was an expansion of Newport Center. The people don't want it, and that's what should be part of your report. This is not what the people want.
Thank you. For a second there, I thought that was Jimmy Stewart I heard.
No, he's not. I've known him since I was five years old. It's not Jimmy. Good evening, Chairman Kramer and members of the Commission. I'm Jean Watt, and I live in Newport Beach. And I also applaud you for the questions you've asked, and some of what I say is pretty repetitive, but hopefully supports some of the things that have come up. I also like the buckets. We've got some comments that we're, I'm not going to make them tonight, but we've been complaining about what's in the buckets, but I really like the buckets. My main concern is what this means in a broader context, accumulative context. What do voters in the city want this lower part of Newport Center to be in the future? I don't think many people understand the precedent-setting nature of this project. They've been relying on the 2006 general plan, which said nothing about a higher, denser future for Block 100, Design Plaza, and the lower portion of Newport Center. But since 2006, new things have quick, quietly, and I'm going to use the word snuck into our zoning code. And they, it isn't a sneak attack, it's just that you have to be really alert to know when changes are made, but there's no project goes with them. So, the average person in the community only is aware when a project comes up that goes with them. So, picture Block 100 across from Muldoons, and it's already been explained that Block 100 has four-corner properties, including this one, which don't belong to the Irvine Company and are zoned and exist as low-rise development. The Irvine Company portions of Block 100 was also zoned for the 32, 37 feet in 2006. But step number one of the domino effect, or what has snuck up on us. In 2006, we had the general plan, and I don't, I think it's 2009, the Irvine Company added, created the North Newport Center Planned Community and added Block 100 to that planned community. Then, and at the same time, and I'm not sure about whether they did it at the same time or it was another year, that they added the 50 feet into the Block 100 using the planned community development process because they'd added it before. And then, in 2015, they added the 10 feet for appurtenances. So, here comes the domino effect. The Irvine Company gets permission to go to 60 feet, but no project has been brought forward. Along comes this project once wants to go to, at this point, 61 feet with underground parking and more bulk and mass. And the staff's rationale, or the applicant's, is that this is consistent with the other previously allowed 50 feet, which hasn't been built yet. And so, I'll stop there. But because of all this precedent-setting, you end up with a totally different, more intense landscape in the lower portion of Newport Center. I don't believe those cumulative effects have been analyzed, and I don't think that's what the people of Newport Beach really want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last one? All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Cindy Schwartz, and my husband Ron and I own the Muldoons Building, and we operate Muldoons since 1974. I am sure you have all heard the quote, and it was just mentioned briefly before me, that goes, "Just because one can does not mean one should." I believe this applies in the case of the proposed 150 residential project at Anacapa Newport Center. Just because we can eliminate all zoning, all rules and guidelines, my question to you is, is this the proper location to do it? Ron took the mic at the studies session recently to tell you about a day in the life of Muldoons Pub and the 160,000 square feet of businesses in Design Plaza, which is the 200 block of Newport Center. You know hospitality business is an early start, 6:00 AM, and a late close. Why in the world would this applicant not be sensitive to Muldoons? We are right across the street, and yet they insist on saying we are blocking no one's views. The scale should be considered. The height and the width of this project must be considered because we are a community. One could look at the Big Canyon homes, they're not up against restaurants. And the newest residential buildings, their developers did not choose to build buildings for residents across from Design Plaza. The idea that all possible options for the 150 Newport Center Drive have been exhausted and only five, six, or seven-story residences are feasible on this small parcel is not an authentic review, in my opinion. And I urge this commission to move forward on this project and continue with our general plan and leave the commercial zoning on Block 100. However, if the city were to allow a residential building, why not be more moderate and considerate of all who will be communing with one another there? Two or three stories should be big enough. That's 15 or 18 units, and the prices they're mentioning are $3, $4, and $5 million per unit. I think the developer can see it's feasible and profitable. Drastically reducing the footprint would allow for public and private view corridors to be preserved. And Muldoons does have currently two view corridors, one to the north over Newport Center Drive and one to the south over the egress-ingress driveway of the car wash. And they need to be protected. Reducing the size of the building's height, length, and width with generous setbacks will encourage a more private environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Warren, and I live at 1201 Surfline Way. And we've been here for over two hours tonight, and we've listened to a lot of information. And all of the information that I've heard up to this point in time is, well, if we did this, and we did that, and we did this, it would work. And it seems to me like we're trying to find a way to make exceptions on this. But yet, maybe we're spending too much time on this instead of trying to make suggestions so it can happen. Why don't we just tell them, this is the way it is. What adjustments can you do to make it happen? I've listened to people come up in the past where their home design was two feet too high, and the guy was six foot seven and couldn't get in his elevator. And there wasn't any exception for that. No one tried to help him get that two feet higher. The answer was strictly no. You make the changes. Maybe the answer to this group ought to be, your project doesn't fit. Why don't you come back to us with something that does fit? And I do appreciate all the work that you've done in trying to make everyone look to the future and hoping it fits in, and I think that's excellent that you do. But it's obviously, this project doesn't fit the way it's presented, and no one wants to say no. But thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that's the end of public comments now.
Oh, darn. I was too late. Anyhow, I'm Susan Skinner, and I'm here to ask you to deny the proposed development at 150 Newport Center Drive. There are a lot of reasons to oppose this project, and I'm going to point out that wherever, whatever traffic there is in the car wash is going to go to another car wash. It doesn't disappear from Newport Beach. But I think we've hit a tipping point in Newport Beach regarding development, and I doubt that there's anybody in this room that would like to see Newport Beach look like Los Angeles, but that's where we're headed. I'm actually here to say once again that this project does require a green light vote and that the rationale that the city is using to deny this vote flies in the face of both the intent of green light and also the city's own published guidelines for implementing green light. In 2012, the city allowed 79 unbuilt hotel rooms to be converted into apartments, which are now being currently built as the horrible San Joaquin Plaza project on the corner of San Joaquin Hills and Jamboree. Green light allows 100 dwelling units over those allowed in the general plan to be built without a vote, and the 79 units should have been counted against those 100 dwelling units. And if the city had done so, this project would be requiring a vote. The 79 hotel rooms were assigned to the Marriott Hotel. They were not built, and they could not legally be changed into dwelling units because of the fact that this is a commercial visitor-serving project, so they can't be converted at the site of the Marriott Hotel. The apartment project cannot legally accept the transfer of an entitlement that's not already a dwelling unit because of the stipulations within the planned community. So, in other words, both the donor site and the receiving site cannot legally change those hotel rooms into apartments. So, the city now says that they were converted, quote, "in the cloud." So, somewhere between when they left the hotel and arrived at the apartment site, those hotel rooms magically changed into dwelling units. That stinks, and everybody in this room knows that that stinks. You hold the power to make whatever decision about this project that you choose. Mr. Kramer was kind enough to meet with us, a group of us, and commented during that meeting that he felt that ballot box planning, such as green light, is not the best way to run a city. I actually agree with you in principle. But when the choices that are made by city leaders are so egregious and so out of step with what the residents have repeatedly indicated that they want, the ballot box is our only recourse. If the city refuses to respect the desires of residents and continues to approve massive developments, our only choice is to challenge your decision in a way that gives the residents a powerful voice and gives them a vote in the process. Every time we are required to do this, we become better organized and more powerful. I would appreciate having you respect the residents who live in this city and deny this project. It's your choice if you want to approve this project or not. It's our choice as residents to decide if this city really is, is in need of, has shown another need for another tighter smart growth initiative. Would it not be nice to have us both work together for a livable kind of vision of Newport Beach instead of reaching this point and, you know, find something that works for all of us? Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, I mean, Ms. Skinner, I think that's what we're trying to do here, and I know you were late, but I kind of had a monologue for like 10 or 15 minutes regarding a lot of this, these issues. So, that's why we're here to have an extended conversation, not just among the Commissioners, but also the public. And we're trying to, you know, make sure we understand. So that's why we're here, to have an extended conversation, not just among the Commissioners, but also the public. And we're trying to, you know, make sure we understand the facts and come to the best decision that's appropriate for not only this parcel and the applicant, but Block 100 and Newport Center in general. So, thank you.
I must say, I really appreciate that. I think that this planning commission is more thoughtful than many of your predecessors, so thank you for that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Nancy Skinner, and I too think you have been an exceptional group. I just don't think I've ever been to a meeting in City Council or Planning Commission where I've had the discussion that we all in the audience wish to hear. So thank you very much. I affirm everything that has been said nice about you tonight. But I came prepared to tell you that I am concerned about this project. The term "death by a thousand cuts" is something that comes to my mind when I look around at all the development that has been taking place and to exceed what's in the 2006 general plan. It seems like it's everywhere, and if we haven't already reached the tipping point in our town, I think we're very close to it. The character of our community is changing, and if we don't slow down with the large developments that exceed the allowable limits under our general plan, I feel we are in danger of losing the charm and the specialness of Newport Beach all the while dealing with increased traffic. Every time a developer is given an exemption, a waiver, or permission to build more than what is allowed in the city general plan, in effect, it's a gift to the applicant. But at what cost to the residents? It may not cost the residents in dollars, but the cost is a chipping away. Here's my death by a thousand cuts of the charm and character of our community and the livability for the residents. It's important that to be sure that any approval over and above the allowed limits in the general plan be something that truly benefits the residents. As for this project, I believe it is too tall, too massive, and feels too much like a New York City building with its limited setbacks. Plus, it sets a precedent for the other properties in the area to do the same. The original designers, as you've all talked about of Newport Center, envisioned a tipped bowl effect, tall at the top, short at the bottom. And I also love what, I can't remember which one of you said this, maybe it was the chairman, but we're also looking at sloped land, so when you put the 50 feet for the rest of the area and put it where they're planning to do it, already at the top of this slope of the land, and think in terms of 61 feet, it makes it considerably higher than the other area, even if they all did 50 feet. So it is something that I hope that you will deny the exceptions that have been asked, live with the general plan the way it is. It doesn't take away anybody's property rights, and I was told by one of the developers themselves that they go into purchasing the property knowing that they may not actually be able to build what they want to build. So it's a risk they're willing to take. I was advised that. So I hope that you will give the kind of wonderful consideration next time that you have this time. We appreciate you very much. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
My name is Carl Cassidy. I'm a resident Newport Beach. I serve on the Water Quality Committee, and I've been a frequent attendee of the Finance Committee for the last five years. I'd invite Chairman Kramer, each of you, Mr. Wagen, Mr. Donlap, Mr. Keating, Mr. Lawler, and Mr. Hillgren, to take a holistic approach, and Mr. emphasize, and look at this measure as whether or not it's fiscally responsible or not. Staff has done an excellent job presenting the developer's side of this matter to you. This represents an immense transfer of wealth of development, what this city, of opportunity cost, of what this staff, these people don't work for free, and all of this they've prepared for you. This is an immense transfer of wealth to one selected individual or developer. What I would ask is, as I finish, if each of you would please turn to page, in the right-hand corner, it says Page 4, if you would, and it's in the bottom, it's Page Right, because I think this goes to, when I want to talk, the whole credibility and the fiscal responsibility of this. What we discovered at the Finance Committee is, in looking at the reserves of the city, is that when this commission has made decided decisions in the past, been attacked by the courts, and it has cost this city millions of dollars. Our legal department costs more than, in terms of staffing costs, than all the cities surrounding us combined. I'd encourage you to look at that. When you choose to go against the public and not look at this from a fiscal responsible nature, that's what happens. And the residents do bear the cost of that in terms of, and it's lost police force, whatever. And this is a million-dollar, several million-dollar decision. All you need to do is look at the settlement cost of what this city has done with planning decisions in the past. When you look, so what I would ask you to look at Page 4, and you know, when I walk in the room with the intelligent people in here, the IQ goes down. But I know if I look at Paragraph 2, and the buckets and all this is done, and the very bottom of Paragraph 2, it talks about Measure Y. Measure Y is like, it's not, "Why? Why are we doing this again?" No, Measure Y. Well, Measure Y is measured by the staff with all their buckets as 30%, okay, that followed the planning prior, planning commission, without a holistic approach, without fiscal responsibility, and 60% against. Well, I don't know how that adds up to you for buckets. I don't know what your numbers say, and we haven't even looked at the details, but this is a legislative matter. If I might finish, this is a legislative matter, and 30 and 60 does not add up. If you, to me, the most important concern you have, you have elected officials, Team Newport, that everybody has been put here on a basis of fiscal responsibility. I would invite each of you, closing, to be fiscally responsible, and if you put any credibility in this staff report that says 30 and 60 adds up, I don't, you know, then you're a whole lot, you add a whole lot better than me. There is no credibility in this report.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chair Kramer and members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I realize you've just listened to approximately 50 minutes of public comment on this, but earlier this evening, you were exposed to about 90 minutes of flim-flam from the city's staff, creating the impression of great complexity in the legislative issues before you, where I think the public understands the issues are really quite simple. I think we all understand now that the planned community recommendation is not coming forward because anybody sees this building as a planned community, but only, as the city's staff said, they believe that the planned community provision was inserted into the zoning code as a mechanism to allow you to arbitrarily change heights on individual properties. I would submit to you that our very nice, but apparently new to Newport City, planning staff seems not to realize that Newport Beach has, for 44 years, had very rigid limitations on how tall structures can be built. For multifamily residential structures, the limit is, it has been and it continues to be, 28 feet. If you want to go through the contortions of making all the findings that are listed on Page 15 of the staff report, including that the height increase is not being used to create more floor area than you could have been created with the 28 feet, then with various kinds of approvals, including a planned community, you are allowed to go to 32 feet, four feet more. But saying you can create some new standard and then justify any new height by saying it's consistent with that new standard you just invented is simply not how it works. That idea deserves laughter, not approval. We've heard a great deal about the 50 feet that was assigned to the center portion of Newport, Block 100, in the year 2009. That is not an arbitrary number. The number of 50 feet is the maximum that our city rigid height limits allow for commercially-zoned district. That's where the 50 feet came from. And that does not apply to residential. Had it been a residential block, the maximum would have been 32. And as to Commissioner Kettings' question about the four corners, in 2009, when this core was being added, the corner owners did ask to be incorporated in that, and the rationale provided by our planning staff as to why it could not be holistically considered as part of the same planned community was it had not been noticed as a meeting to include the four corners, therefore, at that meeting, sorry, Irvine Company will not allow them into the planned community. That was the whole justification for that. And then, I am running out of time, so finally, as to the 79 units that you heard Ms. Skinner talk about, I did want to point out that at one point, we've heard that those could be converted into dwelling units without counting towards green light. In 2006, when the general plan, in 2006, the Planning Commission recommended a policy that would allow Newport Center hotel rooms to be converted into Newport Center dwelling units. It was one of the applicants, Todd Ridgeway, who was on the council at that time, recommending not putting that provision into the general plan because clearly it would conflict with green light, and any converted units would have to count to that total. Very odd now that his project does not have to include the 79 previously approved by a policy that he thought was inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see anyone else, so... Okay, she's leaving. All right. See how sensitive I am to everyone's feelings? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant have any further statements or rebuttal or comments?
The applicant feels like he got the nomination, but they made him deliver the speech at the other convention. So, thank you for the comments. We've been trying to work diligently with the community. We've had numerous outreach meetings, and we will continue to do that because ultimately we have a site that is 40-some-odd years old and functionally obsolete, and we have to put something good there that benefits the community. So our arms are open, we're wide open, and we want to do something right. Just for points of clarification, we own the car wash company. We operate the car wash. Just so the community is aware of the functional obsolete part of it, you'll see a new tube that just opened at the Chevron Station at San Joaquin and Jamboree, and you're about to see another one open at the Shell Station across the street. So I don't think people are going to have problems getting their car washed. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the Commission. So, let's see. Is there any discussion that Commissioners would like to have at this point? I think we gave a fair amount of direction to staff already. Does staff have any comments on any of the public hearing testimony?
So, thank you, Chair Kramer. First of all, I do want to thank that Mr. Cassidy, to bring up the typographical error in the staff report on Page 4. We had intended to bring that up in our comments, but that is a typographical error regarding the no result, which should have been 69.2%. So I just do want to note that for the record. We understand that the Commission does want to have a significant time or ample time to review the response to comments for the final environmental impact report. Typically, our staff reports are available less than a week before the hearings. I think, given the amount of information that the Planning Commission has requested, the fact that we want to give both the Planning Commission and the public adequate time to review the response to comments before the next hearing, we would recommend a four-week continuance to August 18th, so it has enough, we have the appropriate enough time to prepare the staff report, get everything out to the community, and ensure that there's no more typos in our staff report, so.
I'm surprised Dr. Mosher didn't pick that one up.
Oh, I believe he did.
Oh, did he? Oh, I should have known. Okay, I think that seems reasonable, as long as the applicant is okay with that. Mr. Lutton? Okay. All right. Any other comments to any of the other public testimony? Any clarifications? Okay, any other Commissioner?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So I'm just looking at our tentative meeting schedule. That would make it be at the same time as the Museum House study session?
My dream comes true, I guess. Everything in one night.
The tentative schedule?
It's a tentative schedule.
Okay. Because if we do do that, I would like to see maybe inquiring about 5:30 or earlier start for the meeting?
Okay, well, we'll get to that later in the meeting when we're
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Talking about future schedule. Okay. Commissioner Lawler?
Just one comment. I think from the Commission and certainly the public, the planned community development plan seems to be a biggie. Just, there are a lot of questions, a lot of comments. I'm just reiterating that, particularly the precedent of the 12 deviations. When were they? How big are they? Why were they done? And then some of the public comments on helping us, I know it's objective, but it doesn't feel like a community if it's one building in one spot. So I'm having a problem, similar to Chair Kramer, just really understanding that. So look forward to seeing the analysis.
But it's okay to have vertical mixed use, and so you could have a community in that, but that's not what's being proposed. Commissioner?
Yeah, a similar question on that, just in terms of clarification. So would the alternative be for them to ask for a variance, which would then require specific findings that we would have to?
Are you speaking in respect to the height?
It's the primary issue that we're dealing with, I think, but...
I think what was discussed earlier was incorporating this project into the existing North Newport Center planned community. We're already doing the, looking at addressing the required findings for an increase in height, regardless of whether we do a PC or variance or some other approach for this.
But if it was incorporated in the North Newport planned community, then the height limit would be 50 feet plus 10, right?
Well, it is still a planned community text amendment, so it still provides that flexibility to establish a height limit that's appropriate. So it still gives that flexibility to create a separate subarea, a separate standard, because each block within North Newport Center has a different height limit set to it, and so we could do the same for this as a subarea.
Yeah, I guess that will be something we have to figure out. So it still gets back to the height issues, and like I said before, it also gets back to the number of unit issues and the intensity within the building for that parcel, and whether it's appropriate or not. Yep. Commissioner Kettings?
I would like to thank the Commissioners for our discussion and frank comments that we kicked around early. I think it set the framework. I want to thank staff for a very good staff report, that we didn't get to interrupt, which is good. But mainly, I'd like to thank the audience for their comments. I mean, I wrote them all down, and very well organized, very well stated, not a lot of repetition. And I was most impressed with Lori Petry. Did you know that there was a character actress on the Dick Van Dyke Show called Laura Petry? Were you the, where is she?
It's not her, no.
Okay. I just, I couldn't wait to ask. So I think we have work to do on this as a Commission. I think we have, the community might have work to do, and the applicant, but let's see where we come with.
Yep. Commissioner Donlap?
I too was impressed with the public comment. We did get a lot of your correspondence late, but a lot of us read it, and we will get up to speed on it, so we thank you for that. I guess, in what I'm hearing, you don't want residential there at all, any size or form, which is a concern for me because that site is, it doesn't look like it's going to be a car wash. So what is it? I mean, if it was to go retail, which current zoning would allow that to be retail without any, yeah, it could be retail, it could be a restaurant, it could be alcohol, ABC issues, all of that. I just don't know, you know, where that heads you when you're worried about the quality of life and our general plan for Newport Beach. I just don't see residential. Putting aside the density and the height for a moment, but the concept of residential there seems to fit the vision of the general plan, which the concept of residential there seems to fit the vision of the general plan, which is to have the work-live thing. I don't buy so much because I don't think someone buying a $3 million condominium is going to be selling shoes at Macy's and walk across the street. But they are going to go to Fashion Island and they are going to shop there, and that is part of the, the community, that concept of entertainment, recreation, and all of that. So, anyway, I, it's more of a general statement of what else this could be if, if we didn't change something, either incorporate it into another PC, like you had brought up, Chairman, which I think is a great idea to look into, or making it fit somehow into the context, because we have other residential up there that seems to have worked.
Yeah, but there, I mean, there's two things. One is a general plan amendment.
Right.
And like I said, I don't have, I don't see any problem changing it to residential. I think
Yeah, I don't either.
I think everyone agrees that that's
But the public seems to be some of
Well, I didn't necessarily hear that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the main thing, which I did hear is what I brought up is, is the zoning code change, which opens up
Right.
The planned community development.
Right.
That's the issue.
And then add, and then you add the height issues and all that to that.
Exactly.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, there's no motion, there's no action required tonight. So, we'll go on to the, we'll close this item and go on to the next. Is that correct?
Chair Kramer, could we have a motion for continuance to August 18th?
Oh, you want to do that? Okay.
Please.
I guess I'll make that motion. So, is there a second? Yeah. Want to vote? Why is everyone leaving? The most exciting stuff is coming up next. The West Newport Streetscape Plan. I mean, this is what we live for. Come on. Okay, is there, who made the second? Okay, Commissioner Wagon? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, next item, item number four, West Newport Mesa Streetscape Master Plan, PA 2015-138.
Yes, Chair Kramer, we just need one moment while we change our PowerPoint presentation and
Okay. Let's, let's take a several minute break then, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, next item is item number four, West Newport Mesa Streetscape Master Plan, PA 2015-138. Staff, you have a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Kramer, Commissioners. I'm sure you'll be relieved to hear that I do not have a staff presentation for you. However, I will go ahead and, we've brought this project before you a couple of times before, so I know you're fairly familiar with why we're here and why we're bringing the master plan to you. But just to reiterate, we have held two public workshops and one public open house, as well as brought it to you twice in study session to go over kind of the process we're, we're going through for the master plan and why it has come about. Without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Brian Hannigan, our consultant from RRM Design, and he has a brief presentation for you.
Unfortunately. Mr. Chair and
So, hold on one second, just so I understand. So, tonight, you're asking us to provide a public forum to review and comment on the draft master plan and then recommend adoption of the Streetscape Master Plan to City Council?
That's correct, Chair.
Good evening, Brian Hannigan with RRM Design Group. So, the last time we came to you, we did a similar presentation. This one just has a little more of the detail of the master plan, the final master plan, and some of the cost estimates that we calculated. But I'll just briefly go through and feel free to ask questions if you want to during the presentation. The primary areas are Superior Avenue, Placentia, Monrovia, 16th Street, Production Place, and 15th Street that show up in the document as this overview slide shows. These are improvements within the public right-of-way and also improvements as development comes in for the 15-foot setback. The goals were just a unifying theme of the landscape, a look at complete streets, principles of better transit access and pedestrian walkability, bicycling, to enhance the facilities in those areas, improve landscape areas along parkways and sidewalks, and utilize sustainability measures where we can with lighting and low-water use, and then opportunities where we can for traffic calming. In the outreach effort, we, we had several different site furnishings to, to look at and choose from, and these were some of the examples of the ones that we, with the public that we heard from and chose for the area. We covered the existing conditions of each of the streets and identified the areas of improvements on each of the streets in the document. And then we kind of analyzed the sidewalks and parkways in each street block. Each side of the street is a little different from the other. It's a variety of different treatments, so we were trying to make sure that we found a way to, to address each of the parkways and sidewalks. Placentia, we found an opportunity there for a, a street median, and that would be a, a good way to help calm traffic and provide some greenery along the street and beautification. So, there's an existing condition example above with the proposed below. This location shows near the liquor store that's on Placentia, and we, we do still provide the left turn into one of the driveways of the two driveways that's there, and still maintains a right in and a right out of the second driveway. These are just sections showing the different improvements within the right-of-way and the 15-foot setback and the median, the new median. Just another view of the existing and proposed improvements. So, just a way to, again, beautify the street, perhaps slow, calm, and calm traffic. On Monrovia, we, we see some opportunities there for some bulbouts on the corners. This helps to reduce the crossing distance for pedestrians and better visibility for their crossing of pedestrians and cars. So, existing and proposed, existing on the left, proposed on the right. A view of 15th Street with some of the right-of-way improvements, a photo simulation. There's also discussion about future undergrounding of power lines, although that's an expensive effort and a big project. It would be a, a good opportunity to look at how you'd improve that parkway if those became available to do.
Can I?
We look at sidewalk improvements, low-water use plants.
Excuse me, back to that power thing. I brought it up the last time you were here. If some of these improvements took place, that power line's still above and the pole's there, is, are, in your budget, are you looking at running con, dry conduit in the event that they can ever get it on, so they're not ripping everything out if and when?
No, we did not. We did not look at that because if you did a project like that, you'd, you'd have to, you know, ground it potentially in the street or where you have the room to do it. But we did not look at it as, as a cost effort anyway. You'd have to do that separately. So, these would be improvements with those power poles in place.
All right.
We also have different trees and shrubs identified in the document. These are all trees and shrubs that are approved by the city staff. We met with Parks and Recreation to go over this pretty much in detail with the different trees that are proposed and shrubs. So, there's a variety to choose. There's some photos that show the different examples, and then we have a spreadsheet that shows where those trees can be used. Also, different shrub species in that same category. These are existing conditions of projects that were recently done, so we want to kind of capitalize on that same character and feel, although we are proposing a little bit wider sidewalks in the conditions that we are showing in the proposed improvements. But we want to follow the similar character of the landscape in using of the drought-tolerant plants. So, we broke it down to near-term, midterm, and long-term phases, around two to four years on the near-term, and these are the areas that we felt would be a good first or near-term impact to make changes out there. So, Monrovia Avenue would be the bulbout areas that I identified earlier with the bioswells potentially in those bulbouts, new sidewalks, and wayfinding signs would come later as well, vehicular mostly. Placentia Avenue median that we were showing earlier in the, in the exhibits. And then Placentia Avenue type D improvements, which is a sidewalk improvement that we show in the document. And the 15th Street intersection, which came up quite a bit in the public outreach, is a, a difficult intersection right now because of the narrow sidewalks or no sidewalks in, in the crossings at that location. Excuse me. And then crosswalk striping throughout the study area, just improvements at intersections for pedestrians, and that goes to for the bicycle striping and signage. And then the improvements along private property is just ongoing as new projects come up or as private property owners want to landscape. They could use the, the document as well. There's also discussion about parking. Is this being a big issue in the area and looking for opportunities to maybe do some shared parking with the community college and Christian High School?
So, from a border perspective with joining Costa Mesa and unincorporated Orange County, does it, does this area of West Newport push to those boundaries, or are there islands that are still not in the city, that are in the city that are not in this, this area?
Yeah, we, the border does kind of, as you can see, kind of goes up and down in that location.
So, like, for example, on the northwest side there, that, is that in the city of Newport Beach but not in this area?
Yeah, the orange areas are the areas that we're showing improvements in the document.
Yeah, no, I know that. I'm talking about
Up above, yeah.
Like that area up on the, is that in the city but not in this Streetscape Master Plan? And if it is, then why isn't it in the, in this area?
I'm, I'm sorry, Chair Kramer. I'm looking at the boundaries and I, of all people, should know the, the difference between Costa Mesa and Newport, and there is some, there are some jogs through the boundaries up in, in that western area. And of course, then we have Banning Ranch as well to the, to the west.
Yeah.
So, I think we've incorporated the, the residential areas, which were the, the primary focus of, of the, of the, of this study. And I do believe, as I'm looking across that's the city boundary up there and the heavy dash line.
Yes.
So, that those are some of more of the industrial and institutional properties there on the west side. And the intent there was, the focus here was to be the residential, more of the residential areas. But if you wanted to include and to expand to, that the study area could go further to the west, those, I, I suppose we could just include the remainders of those streets. Because 16th Street dead ends on the western boundary with Banning Ranch, as does, of course, well, 15th Street goes all the way to the city boundary.
Can you pull up a map of the boundaries of the city of Newport Beach? I know there's tons of maps that have this, so we could just make sure. It's not in your, yeah, it's probably online. I just, if we're going to do something like this, I might as well just include every area up to the boundaries, just so it's comprehensive. Even if it's not majority residential, I mean, at some future point, it could be. So, we might as well just clean it up at this point. Obviously, Banning Ranch would not be a part of it.
Right.
You know, Ticonderoga, that whole neighborhood, I forget the name of it, would not be part of it. Hoak Hospital doesn't need to be. I just want to make sure everything's cleaned up otherwise.
The city boundary is obviously shown in the blue line. And just one thing to piggyback off of what Kim was saying, the jogs that are shown in that area are representative of what the general plan land use element identifies as the West Newport Mesa area. So, it wasn't arbitrary. That's what the general plan identifies.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I would just, I would add that on the northwest section, that that whole area be included in this plan. All the area that's kind of a triangular area.
Mm-hmm.
And then, then I think it's the industrial yard over on Newport Boulevard and Superior.
The corporation yard?
Yeah. Then just that finishes it out.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, keep going.
I asked you to stop real quick, just to, you showed some shots of some street scenes that showed the shrubs on the planning plan.
Existing projects that happened or?
Uh, yeah.
A little bit further back?
No, it's, sorry.
If in the general plan, that area is not considered West Newport Mesa, then what is it?
Whoop, bingo, that one. Okay, so this here. So, I'm a fan of saving water wherever possible, and, and I have seen the signs where brown is the new green, and I don't buy that. I think brown is the dead and dying. And I'm just curious as to how much water we're saving. I think the, the improvements that were done on Dover look fantastic.
Agreed.
If that's a, if that's a water-wise program, that looks terrific. I think these here look like they belong in Cathedral City. So, i- is this really what we're talking about for the definition of this area? I mean, I'm, I, I think this would be horrible.
Yeah, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. And I agree, the area on Dover, I drive by it almost every day. Every time I drive, it's like the city did a great job.
So, so on this selection and this design, is this, is this what the community said we want, or how, how did?
I think you as architects is using these as examples, but
Yeah, they're examples. I think, we, we have a plant list that's probably similar to what Dover has, and
But, but I think
We're showing a little tighter planting.
People need to see what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I would, I would delete these slides and
Looks horrible.
And just use what Dover is, if that's, if that fits the plant palette that you have. Because this, this is not helpful.
All right.
Because as you know, these things go back to, oh, let's take a look at the photos because people are lazy and they don't read.
Look at that go.
We've seen that happen several times.
Okay.
Okay, keep going, sorry.
No problem. I asked for it.
I didn't say you're lazy.
That's good. So, midterm phase is four to six years, includes Placentia Avenue remaining improvements. So, that would be the other blocks and sidewalk improvements, Production Place improvements, which is mostly sidewalk and plantings, 15th Street improvements, and then the, just the continued property, private property improvements. Undergrounding, as we've been mentioning, utilities like that would have to be a planned effort and ongoing. So, we just put it in there so it's not overlooked. And then long-term is six to eight years, and that would be the, the supplemental improvements on Superior Avenue. It has already a median with plantings that look good and quite a few street trees. So, there's just some pockets that we propose to improve on that one.
These valuations or pricing, does that include escalation?
Yes, it does. Escalation and design contingencies and all that. So, we looked at it over the next six to eight So we looked at it over the next six to eight years.
So everything in the plan is your consultant's estimate of 6.8 million?
Yes, at this level, it's, that's the estimate that we came up with.
And that's if the community, the city paid for it. How many of these are going to be required by a streetfront development? They, you say you have to follow this plan and you're going to have to put it in. But somebody takes an old industrial area and turns it into whatever, you know, new. Aren't those staff conditions, Kim, for that? And here is a master plan, you follow this?
Right, right. Vice Chair Kitting, when we do require improvements in the public right-of-way, it's typically done in construction with some, in connection with some type of subdivision map where we're requiring, you know, new driveway approaches or sidewalks replaced. So it would be, I think what's being proposed in this master plan is, I think, the worst case in terms of what the city's responsibilities of cost would be for the implementation of the master plan. And where there are opportunities where we can require adjacent property owners to help install master plan improvements, we, of course, would do that. But there has to be some nexus between the actual development that's occurring on the property with any improvement within the public right-of-way. So what is important and what makes this master plan, I think, really, a really positive thing for this area is that we'll have the, we'll have it as an approved document and we could use it as a tool when, as new projects come in. Because there are other areas within this, within this statistical area that we expect to redevelop in this timeframe that we're showing for the master plan implementation.
Chairman?
Yes, come on.
So there is not a capital budget out there someplace to put some of this in place besides using developer conditions to get it done?
So Commissioner Dunlap, we have done several, what we call capital improvement program planning projects, where the first step is always to do the master plan and put together the concepts, work with the community, and put a similar document, what we're showing here tonight, together for city council approval. And then through the annual budget process, then the city council would look at this project as well as other projects and decide how the budget for the next year would be spent in relationship to capital improvements. So it basically puts the framework in place. And then if council wants to proceed with the first phase or the second phase, they can go ahead and they have a document to work off of. And then we can have a budget to start the actual working drawings. And then it's usually another two years before we could actually start the construction. So we need this master plan to start that process.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I liked some of the revised concepts in this updated one on Streetscape in the dimensions. But having spent a little time going up and down Placentia and Superior, it's going to be very difficult on some of these frontage properties to go in there and get, you know, get enough room to pull this off. So I assume it would be piecemeal for a while? Or is it, let's do two blocks of Placentia and, you know, bar the door. We're going to rip it all out.
Yeah, part of what we looked at in the phasing was just looking at how we can complete segments of it. So for instance, the median on Placentia, it could be a capital improvement project that would just be on its own. You put it in, it has an impact right off the bat, but it's not really dependent on the sidewalk or frontages.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and then the blocks, we just have, you have to do sort of pieces at a time.
Okay. Oh, Kim, are there going to be an assessment district over this whole massive area to get a little hitty-going and kick in property owners?
I don't believe that's been, is in the master plan as a potential funding mechanism. But that certainly is something that could be, you know, used as a funding tool if.
All right, that'll go over real well. Big area.
On the center median there on Placentia, it seems like there's a little bit more room that there's a bike lane. But I don't know if you've studied anywhere in Costa Mesa on 17th Street. I think the city of Costa Mesa ruined that street because it's hard to get into businesses from driving and making a left turn into with all of them. And I've noticed that several of them that they originally planned for, they wound up ripping out after the fact. So I just want to make sure that we really study this and make sure that we're not impacting any businesses. And I'm looking at the picture here, and it looks like coming from Costa Mesa on Placentia to turn and left, as you're coming from Costa Mesa to Newport direction, you're making a left into that, I think it's a Minute King, that liquor store there. It seems like it's impacting that left-hand turn. Is that, am I not seeing it?
Yeah, they have two driveways. They have two driveways, one's on the view there. It's this side of the image.
Because there's a lot of, a lot of other areas upward too that I'm seeing that are apartment entrances. And what's the speed limit of that street?
That one is, I believe that's 35 or 40, is that right?
It's 40 miles an hour.
Because on 17th Street, there's, there's room for one or two cars when you're turning into, say, Sprouts. I don't know if anyone else is familiar, but I do this every week. And I kind of have to, you know, jerk my car in there to pull in, to wait in there for the oncoming traffic to be able to turn into that. So I just, I want to alleviate any potential for any, either accidents or if we are doing 45 miles an hour, you know. So make sure that we really put emphasis on those center medians. And if we're doing that on Superior too, because Superior, is that also 45?
Yeah, I believe Superior is 45.
At Superior, we're not, we're not adding any new medians.
Any further ones than what's there?
Yeah, those are already in. Yeah, this one, just to answer your question, there is only one left turn that we are taking out on one of the liquor store driveways. But the other one does have a left turn still available. So they still have a left turn. All the other driveways still have left turns available to them.
Okay, yeah, just make sure you study 17th and see that it is a mess. And I just want to prevent that from occurring in this area. Thank you.
Okay, let's open up to public comment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ed Davis. I'm with Ebtide LLC. We own the property at 1560 Placentia Avenue. And we are in support of the landscape master plan. We attended the public meetings and participated in the discussion and are in full support. We think it'll bring a nice cohesive landscaping theme to the area. Over time, we are conditioned to improve our 15-foot setback in front of our development Ebtide residential project and look forward to your approval.
What's the status of your development?
I don't know.
We're under construction currently. We have permits for our improvements and we're well underway.
Very good.
Our perimeter wall is installed and.
Can we make sure we're invited to the ribbon cutting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Is there a big party I didn't know about or what?
We have a big party every time we open a sales office. So we'll make sure and get commissioners and invite. I also want to say thank you to the staff for their leadership in this matter. Thank you.
Chair Kramer and members of the planning commission, as you well know, my name is Jim Mosher. And I have to admit, I have not read the 73 pages of the final master plan, which you're considering tonight, so.
What have you been doing? Were you on vacation or what?
So if your recommendation tonight is to approve it, my comments, I think, will become between this hearing and when it shows up at the city council, whatever those comments might be. Part of my excuse for not reading it is actually, I don't know how many of the public are interested in this, but unlike any other report I've ever seen, all the public is seeing is the four pages of, three pages, I guess, pretty much, of Ben's staff report. And it mentions the attachment, but the attachment is not attached to it. And it's not even in the lobby copy of the complete planning commission agenda. So it took some effort to download and look at it, which I have been doing while you've been talking. The main comment I wanted to make is to tie this into the previous agenda item, which you were talking about, 150 Newport Center, and what the height limits for residential are throughout the city. As a couple of you may remember, this area, West Newport Mesa, is the only area of the city where multifamily residential is currently allowed to go to 40 feet. And this plan itself was part of the mitigation or compensation for those increased heights of multifamily residential. So it's surprising that the city staff thinks that 55, 60, whatever feet is allowable in Newport Center. And the other thing I wanted to say to tie this into the previous item, where you were talking about general plans and consistency of development with our general plan. Scrolling through the report, and you just heard about the left turn, I think, for this. This, I think, is on page eight, and there's a yellow pole sign. I think we're not supposed to have pole signs anymore. Announcing King Liquor, which I think is the left turn you were just hearing about probably. And I distinctly recall that when Measure Y was before the voters, we were told that this had been changed in the general plan to a multifamily residential zoning, which would qualify it for the 40 feet now. But there was an urgent need to change it back to commercial, which was the previous zoning. And there was some need to do that within 10 years of the 2006 general plan being adopted. I'm just kind of curious what the status of King's Liquor is. It was urgent for the voters to approve a general plan change for it. I haven't heard anything more about it since. Thank you.
I've been kept up late at night wondering the same. So, Kim, maybe you could shed some light on that.
King's Liquor is a non, legal, non-conforming commercial development in a residential general plan designation. And according to the city's municipal code and general plan, it needs to be converted within a certain timeframe to a conforming use. And so the, because of the charter requirements, there, a general plan amendment for that property would require a vote. And so at that time, there was a suggestion by staff instead of going through to include that property as part of the overall Measure Y. So we have not heard back from the property owner in terms of their wish to ask for continuance on the abatement period. Because currently, they are under an abatement provision. But it's a multi-year provision.
Sounds like you might have a consulting job. Yes.
If we're going to put that median in there, should maybe we hold off and wait until we get an answer of what that's going to be in the future?
Probably not.
I think at such a time when we get into construction drawings, then we can really dwell, get into the details of the access for every property that's affected.
Okay, next.
Evening. My name is Sheila Coff and I live in Newport Beach on the west side. I've lived there for many years. My husband and I have lived in Corona del Mar, Balboa. We've lived on the east side and the west side. We've lived many years on the west side. We've shown up many times to, along with many of the other residents, to say that there has been too much traffic now in Newport Beach. And yet, the planning commissions have said yes to continuing development of residences. And I want to say thank you very much tonight. It's been the most refreshing evening listening to this particular planning commission. I think you're new, right? Many of you are new replacements? Okay, just one, but it's been refreshing to hear. But anyway, there is an unreality going on with the yeses to the continuing developments. Because we have been impacted and with the spawn and the, the, behind the green, what is it called? The green meant slow development, not green for the green light to go ahead with yes to every development. But there is no more space for transportation. This area is impacted with traffic and we don't need, what we need is open space. If you're going to say yes to more people in Newport Beach, and Dave Kiff says that during the summers, as it's getting hotter with climate change, like right now, the population doubles in Newport Beach. Where are these people going to go? This may be out of line, but we need Banning Ranch to be open space preserved for the natural life that is there because of all of the people that are invited into Newport Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, anyone? Okay, public comments are, okay, hold on.
Hi, I'm Jean Wanless. My family owns property at 877 Production Place. And I apologize, I have not read the 73-page document, but I do plan on doing that. My comment and question is, has there, have there been provisions made for where any type of seating or benches are going on these streets?
Is that your only question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then you can respond.
Yes, we put in the plan in each of the phases, budget for benches, several benches on each block. That would be determined again in the, in the more detailed design about where they go and spotting them.
And are those benches for like buses or for just resting?
There is one bus stop on Placentia that would include a bus shelter and bench. And then the rest are just bench, benches like that shown up there or chairs. Sometimes we'll do.
And the middle bars to prevent sleeping?
Yes, the bench that you see up there has the bar in the middle. And then we also use chairs, just, you can sometimes just put two chairs that are bolted down and then people can't really sleep on those, so.
Okay, okay, public comments are closed. Bring it back to the commission. There much discussion here? If not, okay, let's.
Well, yeah, I just have a few comments. I mean, this is $6.6 million over eight years, depending on the phasing. If it gets phased, if it becomes more phased, it's going to become more expensive. And of course, that has to do with city council and the budget and what would get approved and what can go forward. I've talked to a couple of you about, if this goes forward, I would really like to see, or at least recommend that the city council look at procuring this work and not the normal public code way, but possibly design-build. Staff could look at that. This is primed for that. The architects did a nice job of laying out the prescriptive scope of this work based on public input. But going forward, it could be bid in that delivery system possibly. And we could get the benefits of not having to deal with 30% design contingency that's built into this budget, which is about $1.5 million of this cost. So it's just something I'd like to put on the table in lieu of what's going on right now with the aftermath of the building we're in, which I don't even want to go any further to talk about. It's something worth exploring, I believe. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve and recommend to city council the West Newport Mesa streetscape plan with the additions of the increased boundary to the outer area of the city limits per discussion and an editing of the conceptual photographs so as they take into account Dover as an example. Is there a second? A second by Hilgrun? All in favor? Please vote.
Mr. Chair, will the comments that Mr. Dunlap be forwarded to the council for?
Well, it's not part of the motion, but staff has it as, as they can put in their staff report. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Okay. Almost done. Item number five, motion for reconsideration. Item number six, community development director's report.
Thank you. I have my notes here. I did want to announce that on Monday, we will be having a workshop for the Mariners' Mile area. The workshop will begin at 7:00 and it will be located in the Seabase on West Coast Highway. It's the first of several meetings that we are intending to hold with the community and of course, the planning commission as we start looking at the Mariners' Mile area. It's the last revitalization that was identified by the city council back in 2011 for revitalization. And so we are, we are actually very eager to start this process. So again, that's Monday night, starting at 7:00 at the Newport Seabase.
So, yeah, so when will that come before the planning commission?
Let me go ahead and send a memorandum to the planning commission, laying out the schedule and where the planning commission will be participating in the process because again, this is, this is really a good opportunity for some hands-on planning for that area. So we'll follow up with the memorandum. And so then, moving forward to September, the California Coastal Commission will be coming back a second time this year to be holding their meeting for the Orange County, LA area. So they will be here on September 7th, 8th, and 9th. So your meeting on September 8th does need to be rescheduled. We were considering Thursday, September 1st, which still is a two-week period from the, your second meeting in August. There are, of course, there may be an opportunity to cancel that meeting, but if you would like to look at your schedules and see if September 1st would be a good alternative to September 8th.
Do they meet at 9:00?
They can. They, they do meet from early in the morning. Their meetings generally start at 9:00 and they end when they, when, normally when they end the agenda for the day. They are anticipating having the Newport Banning Ranch project on, on the agenda. And there's also a potential for the Poseidon plant in Huntington Beach to also be on the agenda. So those, both of those items are two full days. They come in toward the chambers, they set it up in a completely different manner, they have their own broadcasting equipment that they set up. So it's really something that once they're here, we don't use the chamber until they depart on Friday.
In comparison to Labor Day, is that Monday? And some folks go out of town. I just want to make sure everyone knows that.
Correct. It is before the holiday. Thank you. You'll be out of town. The September 6th is not an option because PBNR is meeting here in the council chamber.
You're proposing the 1st or the 5th?
I'm proposing the 1st, Thursday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Right here, the one.
So if you just want to put a tentative hold on your calendar, Jennifer will send an email to you and then of course, as we get closer to the hearing, you know, we'll see how, whether or not we need one that day.
Okay.
So then, talking about your next hearing on August 4th, the only item that we did have scheduled for that meeting was 150 Newport Center. So with a continuance to August 18th, there will not be a need to have the meeting on August 4th.
Unless you want to move forward. Auto Nation, for example.
The applicant Trosh asked for the 18th?
Right.
Yes, they did.
How about Auto Nation?
I don't know that it would be ready for August 4th.
Okay. Yeah, let's move up Museum House. Not. Okay. All right. So 4th, we're basically canceling, is that right?
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Could meet alternatively at Muldoon's that night.
We could.
Have a summer party. Okay. Maybe Newport Beach Country Club? 18th, we're going to have to figure out here. So now, in addition to these three, we also have 150 and Trosh.
That's correct. So what we'll do is we'll go back and we'll, we'll discuss internally with, you know, what would be appropriate to schedule for the 18th. And as again, this is always a tentative agenda that we're providing to you. And so there's always a lot of moving pieces.
Okay. Well, why don't you propose something and then circulate it, you know, next week or whatever.
We'll get back to you.
Okay, great. All right. Anything else on the schedule? Okay. Next item is announcements on matters that the planning commission members would like to be placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report. Anything? No? Okay. Request for, okay, sorry.
Real quick, tell us about the appeal for that apartment project over by the airport that we denied. It's going to council? Tuesday, yeah. Tuesday, Tuesday.
Let me just get the tentative schedule to see when we have...
Well, my question is, are they just taking it in the way we saw it or did they do some improvements? Or does anybody know?
So when we went to the city council, they asked, they indicated that they would be making some changes to their site plan. They have not yet submitted them to us, so we haven't had the opportunity to evaluate them. So we will be bringing them back to the planning commission for review and recommendation before taking them back to the city council.
I thought I read they appealed at the council and they're being heard.
So the appeal, the appeal is, they, they appealed the decision, but they wanted to go to, but when, but when they went to the city council, they recognized that they wanted to make some changes to the site plan to respond to the comments and, that were made by the planning commission, but they didn't present those to the city council. So, nor have they presented them yet to, to us. So they, we will be bringing it back to you once we have the, the changes that they're proposing for your review and recommendation back to the city council.
Just to clarify, you're absolutely right, Vice Chair Kettin. It is going to the city council, but the staff recommendation is to refer the item back to the planning commission. So it's to the city council's discretion whether they refer it back or not. And that's what's going to be before the city council on Tuesday. Hasn't happened yet.
So they haven't appeared before the city council yet?
No, that's on Tuesday.
We have room on the 18th.
Yeah.
I know, we can do it.
Let's just add that.
Good call.
So we'll just start the meeting at like 6:30 in the morning, AM, and work through. Okay, any other requests for excused absences? Anyone?
The 18th?
The 18th? Yeah. I can't make the 18th. No, just joking. Okay. So I think that's it. We got a little, little funny there at the end, but that's the way things go, so.